Okay, we're live.
Okay, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Batavia City Council for Monday, January 4th, 2021. And I'd like to begin by asking everyone to rise for the invocation to be filed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Tonight is the City Council commences its first meeting of 2021. We just asked for a special blessing to be showered upon ourselves, our country, and the rest of the world that we may in this year realize the conquering of the pandemic that has so impacted and inflicted so much death and dismay throughout our world. Tonight, we just asked that as the serum is being distributed and the shots are being taken and all the folks are following the proper measures that we are going to conquer this in no time and that we'll be on to being able to have regularly hosted meetings in our council chambers, which brings us all together and I really feel creates a greater sense of community when we can do it in that way. Also tonight, we want to ask for a blessing on all those from our community who are suffering and disinfirmed. And we just asked that a special blessing be showered upon them along with all the men and women from our community and from out the United States who are serving in defense of the liberties of the United States of America on foreign soil. Also tonight, we just asked for guidance and vision and understanding by the members of the City Council as we go about the items of business before us, knowing that each, each one of us in our own hearts and minds is here tonight to do what we feel is in the best interest of Batavia and its future. We ask for all these blessings, amen. Alderman Wolf, I'll turn to you for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the Republic for which it stands. One nation.
Nation under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Amy Seated. Ask the City Clerk to please call the roll.
Miller?
Here.
Rizzato?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Knop?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
O'Brien?
Yeah.
Callahan?
Here.
Meitzler?
Here.
Malley?
Here.
Yor?
Here.
Daron?
Here.
McFadden?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all 14 members of the City Council are present and count for this evening's meeting. Moving then to item number four, which is our annual or regular reminder that we ask everyone to please use a microphone for the meeting is being taped so it can be replayed on BATV and it's easier if everybody speaks directly into the microphone and makes it easier for everybody to hear. Moving to item number five, which are items to be removed, added, or changed on tonight's agenda. I don't have anything, Alderman Chantet, as Chairman of Governmental Services, do you have anything?
Your Honor.
Danny went silent, I think.
Oh, I'm sorry. You're all right. I do not.
All right. Well, then we'll move to item number six. Do we have anybody in the council that has anything? Okay, we'll move to item six, which is the presentation of tonight's consent agenda. Alderman Chantet, as Governmental Services Chairman, would you present that, please?
Your Honor, the consent agenda reads as follows. Approvals, the December 25th, 2020 payroll in the amount of $882,182.19 and the accounts payable check register in the amount of $541,108.68. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the consent agenda as read.
That got knocked. My turn to second by now. The consent agenda. Any further discussion? Record the roll, please.
Chantet?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Baron?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Yor?
Hi.
Daron?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rizzato?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
Knop?
Hi.
Motion is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no, and none absent. Okay, moving to item number seven, which is matters from the public for items that are not on the agenda. Do we have anybody or raising their hand?
I don't see anybody right now.
All right. Okay, then we're going to move to some presentations. And the first one, we're honored tonight to have Britta McKenna with us and she's going to talk about her program Encore Batavia. Britta?
Good, thank you. Can we share my screen?
Yes, let me do that for you, Britta.
Thank you.
I've got it.
You got it?
Thank you.
There you go.
All right. Well, I see it now in the box. Now I've got to find it on my... There we go.
Perfect.
Thank you very much, Mayor and City Council for having me tonight to share Encore Batavia. I give you a little backstory if you're wondering where this is all come from. So the history at a glance is that this program was inspired by 69 Cups of Coffee, Caffeinated Insights about Batavia. It's a research project that I undertook in 2019. A number of people actually on this call, I interviewed, just to learn more about Batavia's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Our mission is weaving our community together. That is really, oh, hold on, just experiences, purpose, and connection. Our partner in this project is the Batavia Parks Foundation. We have a letter of agreement so that we can operate without starting a whole new nonprofit. So we are program under the Parks Foundation since July of last year. And we also have an intergenerational advisory council that was formed last July. And we have three operating teams, purpose, placemaking, and programs. In program, we have, our premier program is called the Batavia Men's Shed, and that is operated by none other than our former city administrator, Bill McGrath. I could give a whole presentation just on the Men's Shed. Okay, so our intergenerational council got established, and we have members in age from 20s through 70s, men and women from our community. And so far, we've developed our mission. We've piloted some programs. And originally, we were looking at an Encore Batavia, an actual physical place with a hub and spoke model, but then COVID hit. That, you know, so we kind of have pivoted to developing the programs first in Encore. We also have three teams. Our purpose team, I'm going to talk a little bit about that tonight, and our Engage Cards project. Our placemaking team, we have three different projects that were kicking off this year. And our program team, and I mentioned them, we had some pilots this year to, just to see what people might want to do, with a veggie stroll, a genealogy workshop, and a poetry workshop. So our Engage Card project is taking the inventory of Batavia nonprofits and nonprofits that serve Batavia. We realized that there's no home base for this. When people want to get involved, it's kind of a DIY project. So we got a lot of information from different resources and have come up with a virtual way to do this, where you can engage just one-on-one on a site. It's a Google site, or you can enlist with a, one of our concierges. It's a volunteer concierge that can actually help you if you're new to town. Maybe you're a teenager looking to find service hours, or you're an empty nester or getting ready to retire and you want to learn more about the volunteer opportunities. So we put our volunteer organizations into categories, the arts, civic, community service, education, environment, service clubs, and social services. They're color-coded. And through a series of questions, we narrow down the kind of topics or things that you like to do, and then help point the direction that maybe you should go. So here are a couple examples. So here's, here's one of the cards in the deck from the environment of the Batavia Parks Foundation. And each card has got a mission statement. It has the logo of the organization, their website, and the contact in their email. And our volunteer concierge, they will actually do a warm introduction to that organization on your behalf. Batavia Main Street is under community service. Civic, here's an example, the Fourth of July fireworks. And of course, BATV is our example for education. So our placemaking team has been very busy this fall, and we vetted some projects. We have now over 20 members on this team and three projects. One is short-term, midterm, and long-term. And I'm going to go through those very quickly. The first one is an interactive art project. This is our short-term project, and our partner is Water Street Studios. And what we're looking at doing is, first of all, inventorying our current art that, and creating more murals and Instagrammable kind of art, and creating maps, and creating, kind of rolling out like the Bulldogs unleashed at locations in Batavia that would like to host murals or interactive art. So we'll be working on this project in the short term, which is a one-to-three-year project. Our intergenerational playground project partner is the Batavia Parks Foundation at this point. We're also looking for more partners. And we're looking to, really, Europe has some great examples of how the generations play together. And looking at either our current playgrounds that might have space and need to replace a piece of equipment that we could pilot, or actually creating an entire playground that features intergenerational play. As a new Mimi, just Grandma, those last couple years, I liked to play with my grandchildren. And so I would love to see Batavia lead the way in Illinois, creating a first generational, intergenerational playground. This third project actually was brought forward to us by Lucy Thielen Atack. You might know that name. She's also on our intergenerational council. And she came to me and said, you know, I've always thought that Batavia needs an east-west crosstown bicycle and pedestrian path. We do a great job of doing north and south on the Fox River Bicycle Trail, Kirk Road, et cetera. But we haven't really established east-west or kind of mapped it out or promoted it. So this is not the route. It is an idea of what a route could be. And it could connect the schools, and it could be something that we, it will take actually probably five to 10 years for this project because we could write grants. And we're partnering with the Batavia Bicycle Commission on this project, as well as a member from King County and other resources. So then, what I want to offer tonight is that Encore Batavia is available to the City Council or any other municipal or organization that's looking for input. We have a standing 30-minute agenda item every month on the third Sundays for any organization that would like input from multiple generations. Like I said, we have men and women 20s to through 70s on our, on our intergenerational council. And we would love to provide feedback, be kind of a focus group. So if that's anything the city would like to take advantage of, I'd love to talk to you about that. Also, we're a standing resource for nonprofit volunteerism. Again, we have not, we're just now going live with this, this Encore kind of deck of cards. It's not a physical deck yet. We imagine that post-COVID, we'd have these at Limestone Coffee and Tea and at the library, and, you know, at the coffee shops and maybe City Hall and the library itself. So physically, physical decks of cards could be printed up and put out every year. But right now, we're doing the one-on-one kind of via Zoom. And so people can set those up with us. We're ready to actually pilot this and get it off the ground. So we invite all Batavians to like us, first of all, on our Encore Batavia Facebook page. If any of these projects sound interesting, we invite you to join our purpose team as a volunteer concierge. We're going to start training shortly. Also, placemaking team. So if the interactive art, the intergenerational playground, or the crosstown bicycle trail sound interesting, we'd love for you to get involved because these projects are just literally getting started. And our program team, if you're interested in creating 21, 21 programming for Batavia by Batavians, like Marsha Boyce gave the genealogy workshop, that might be something we'd love to have you involved in that. So at this point, I would entertain any questions from the council. And again, reminding you to like us on Facebook, we don't have a website yet. But you can contact me if you have questions or more information, or your group would like a presentation. My email is encorebatavia@gmail.com. And thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Britta, for your leadership in this. Does anybody in the council have any thoughts or ideas or questions at the moment? I guess not. So thank you for getting this started. And I'm sure we'll be back talking with you here pretty quick.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Britta.
Okay, moving to item number nine, which is the Batavia Community Diversity Initiative. And we're honored to have Chris Mo with us tonight. Chris, turn it over to you.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank the mayor, the aldermen, the city administration, and the community for giving us this opportunity. And I'm looking forward to talking to you about our new organization that we've started called the Batavia Community Diversity Initiative, or Batavia CDI for short. Unfortunately, BCDI was already taken in the state of Illinois, so we had to make do with what we could. For those who don't know, my name is Chris Low. I've lived in Batavia for almost 20 years now. I am a community member. I am a parent of PHS students, and I am a school board member. And I am the first president of our organization. With me tonight is Kathleen Meeks. She is also a community member who has lived here for 10 years. She has, she's the parent of younger children, and she is a teacher. And she is our first education team leader within our organization. And we are looking forward to telling you about the journey that we've taken thus far to get here and where we are headed. This process and the presentation from Encore Batavia kind of reminds me why I love this town. This town is amazing because it never ceases to impress me the things that we accomplish when we're properly motivated. The talents and the resources that this town has and the willingness to share them with our community makes me happy to be a citizen every day. So today or tonight, we are going to tell you about who we are, how we got here, what our mission is, what we've done thus far, what we're currently working on, and what our dreams for the future are. With that in mind, I'm going to pass things off to Kathleen.
Thanks so much, Chris. And thank you, everybody, for having us tonight. So first, just want to share a little bit about who we are. Our friends and neighbors, some of us who knew each other beforehand, but many who didn't, who came together following the Black Lives Matter rally this spring. And to ask the question, so what's... So we're made up right now of people like Chris, elected officials who have helped spread the word to influential people, business owners and professionals who have offered buildings, knowledge, and resources to provide amazing opportunities for us, but mostly parents who are motivated to build a stronger tomorrow for our children, educators like myself with an understanding for how diversity in curriculum, resources, and representation can impact all of our students, and young people and students overall who want to be leaders we need for the future.
One of the amazing things about living in a small town is you get to know a lot of the people who you live with. And those that you don't know, there's a good chance that you're connected with them through your children, your friends, or your neighbors. And I've discovered that when people know each other, they're much more likely to pitch in and lend a hand. They'll point you in the right direction when you need a problem solved. Having a strong network of support is one of the things that makes Batavia great. If more people were aware that that network existed and that they could participate in it, the opportunities for everyone would only improve. Who knows what great business leaders or ideas are out there just waiting for guidance? The network, our small group has developed, has overwhelmed us with support thus far in the most amazing way. We've already received pledges of support from you at City Hall, our library, our school district, the Park District, and Depot Museum, our state representative, Maura Hershaw, our state senator, Karina Villa, and even our U.S. House Representative Lauren Underwood have pledged their support. Additionally, community organizations have reached out to us without us approaching them, which has been amazing. We've received contacts from our Chamber of Commerce, our Rotary Club, Fermi Lab, and the Batavia Education Association. And beyond that, we recently entered a partnership with the Chicago Community Trust and the Illinois Department of Human Resources, working on a project called the Healing Illinois Initiative. And we're going to tell you a little bit about that more later. But you may be asking how such an amazing group of individuals came together. And the short answer is, it's just Batavia being Batavia. But there's a little bit more to the story, and I'm going to let Kathleen tell you a little bit more of those details.
Right. So how we got here tonight before you with, on the precedent of being a 501(c)(3) organization. So again, the inspiration came from our community as we saw young people lead their own peaceful rally, and hundreds of Batavians attended. And leaders like Mayor Schelke, we saw that this community affirms that black lives do matter. So we were inspired to come together to produce some more lasting impact. So what began as a Facebook post and Zoom calls has led to this formalization we have before us now. And what we are also inspired by and just already starting to do research, even in our partnership with the Depot Museum, is this rich history that we have in this regard. The King County Anti-Slavery Society in the 1800s was founded by a Batavian, Chauncey Cook. Being a part of that organization meant you were not only in favor of immediate emancipation, but also equality for all formerly enslaved people, which was not necessarily a goal for all abolitionists at the time. This organization in Batavia also promoted for full rights of women in politics and was against colonization in all forms. So living in this community meant the opportunity to join organizations like that one. And so we like to think of our organization as a continuation of this legacy.
And we wanted to build on that rich history that our town already has. And once we realized that we shared a common purpose and goals, we decided to organize officially and start a charity. So we began the paperwork in August, and we're already recognized as an official charitable organization by the state of Illinois. And we hope to receive our 501(c)(3) certification any day now. We've also embarked on the difficult work of creating our initial structure and our mission. And having completed that task, we elected our first leadership in December. And then the following day, we received some amazing news. Back in October, we were presented with the opportunity about, we heard about a grant from Healing, Healing Illinois Initiative. And that's the partnership between the Illinois Department of Human Services and the Chicago Community Trust. And little did I know that if you know a grant writer within your organization, you find out about grants. And we decided to apply for that grant, and our expectations were extremely low. We're new. We weren't an official charity yet, and we had done very little actual work at that point. However, we looked at the details of the grant, and it seemed like it was almost written for us. So I'm going to tell you a little bit about the grant. The Racial Healing Initiative was launched in October with the mission to spur community-centric, inclusive spaces for Illinois residents to talk, learn, and grow. The initiative also lists the following goals: to build an advanced knowledge and understanding of racial healing and racial equity in communities across the state; to increase trust and relationship building among residents of Illinois; and to provide opportunities for communities and individuals to begin to heal from the harms caused by racism. Batavia CDI was one, was chosen out of one of 179 grants that were granted of over 500 applicants that applied. We were fortunate enough, we found out that we received a grant for $12,000, which will help us further our work. And we were really excited about that. However, before I share what we plan on doing with that money, we wanted to share our mission with you. Our mission is to cultivate and strengthen Batavia's commitment to diversity, equity, and belonging. We want Batavia to be as inclusive and welcoming as possible. As you can see, this ties in perfectly with the grant and what they're trying to accomplish. What you may or may not know is it also ties in with our city's fundamental values. Our city does have a diversity statement, and we are trying to strive and provide an inclusive environment in which people from all backgrounds and ages can live and thrive. Based on our city's history and our current values, we believe we can be an ideal partner in achieving this goal. Next, I'm going to tell you about some of the projects we've been working on. And then I'll let Kathleen fill you in on what we're doing to fulfill the grant and what the future holds. Starting in August, well, actually, the nice thing about the organization that we've started is we're project-based. The goal is to provide opportunities for as many people as possible. So if somebody has an idea, or perhaps they may have some resources, but they don't know how to go about improving our, our community, we're here to provide guidance and resources if necessary to do that, provided it meets, meets our mission. So with that in mind, starting in August, we did some voter registration drives to get more participation. We also have worked with our elected bodies within the city to film a series of videos that explain what our elected officials do and how one can become an elected official. That is, those videos have been filmed, and we're in the editing stages. And hopefully, sometime in the near future, we will have one-to-two-minute TikTok-style YouTube videos that people can watch to learn more about how our city operates. We also shot additional footage with that, and we hope to do more videos in the future. And Kathleen will touch upon some of that. Also, we've been partnering with the Park District and the Depot Museum in order to help them promote their Black History exhibit, which is part of their Community Culture and Conversation Series. And then finally, we started what we call the Freedom Library, which is an anti-racism library where people can go and borrow literature to further their education. And in addition to that, we are doing book clubs. We started our first book club in December, and that went very well. And we hope to do additional book clubs in the future where our community can discuss these difficult topics. And I believe with that, I'm going to pass things on to the education portion because we feel that a teacher should talk about education.
Thank you so much. So as Chris mentioned earlier, I'm an educator, so my role in working with schools is what I'm most excited to share with you all tonight. So one of the first things that we already started back in November is an LRC audit with the elementary schools, surveying the community and curating a list to highlight stories and literature that reflect diverse experiences in our community and in our world. Then we've already started coordinating teacher leadership. So we are partnering with teachers to help with curriculum development and programs promoting equity and inclusion. And the other piece that aligns a lot with our grant that Chris was speaking to is the potential training opportunities that we have. So we understand that education is a crucial component to this work. So the first part of our grant fulfillment provides funds for us to team with other organizations that provide leadership trainings in the areas of equity, inclusion, and anti-oppression work. So one of our next initiatives we plan to see come to fruition in the coming months is this diversity training. Those of us who currently work in education have resources and connections to provide the most appropriate and engaging trainings in these areas. So we really view ourselves as this organization as a resource to support doing this anti-oppression work by doing the vetting for various organizations and institutions who are eager for it in our community. So one of the first things that we've done with this grant is we already began work internally by partnering with Next Steps Evanston for our own organization because we identified that they have been doing similar work in their community already, and have some things to teach us about leadership and training internally. Then in the community, as we mentioned before, we are in conversation with other district leaders in the area who've been doing this work and can offer guidance on how to implement this task in our own school district. And then this is where all of you come in on our city council. We have already begun vetting consulting organizations and individuals to work with our elected officials in this community. So all of our leaders are supported in promoting equity, inclusion, and belonging as well. Then, just briefly, the remainder of our grant for this year is dedicated to historical preservation. So we're going to continue to work with the Depot Museum to expand upon the community cultures and conversations exhibits, and produce educational videos that highlight historical documentation about our town's diverse history. And then just to preview some of our long-term goals, like we said, we're a training ground for future leaders. We want to provide this diversity education. And then something we're excited about is government field trips. So to kind of reduce intimidation of how to become more typically engaged was this idea where we have groups attend meetings much like this one, and can be introduced to their elected officials, and we would sponsor those, those field trips, per se. And then something that we're looking to do this coming summer, Freedom Walk/Run on Juneteenth. And this is an effort to promote the diverse history of our country and community. And this is an effort to promote the diverse history of our country and community.
Thank you very much for that update. And that's our presentation for the most part. Batavia is an amazing community that has embraced diversity for generations. Our willingness to stand up for the oppressed stretches back before the Civil War when we were deemed as safe as Canada, according to local scholar John Dryden. I learned that at a Batavia Lyceum series, which is another one of the amazing things that our town offers. Fermi Lab is another shining example of our willingness to invite people from all over the world to come to our community and live here. Batavia has demonstrated our ability to accomplish great things when we work together. We believe everyone has something to contribute and we should be motivated to provide opportunities for our citizens to succeed. Working together and sharing the burden and responsibility of running and improving our town is our obligation. Batavia CDI is here to help. We look forward to working with the city and the rest of the community. And to find out more or to reach us or to volunteer, you can reach us at our website at www.bataviacdi.org. Or you can find us on Facebook at Batavia Community Diversity Initiative. We meet the first Wednesday of every month at 7:30. Currently, those meetings are on Zoom. We're always looking for volunteers at all commitment levels and obviously we would welcome your donation also. And with that, I open the floor to any questions or comments that you may have. And thank you for this opportunity.
We have any questions from the city council? Certainly on behalf of the city council, I just want to thank Batavia CDI for your initial steps here. I think you're onto something that could be a very valuable asset for our town to have as we move forward. And certainly with the expansion that's now taking place over at Fermi Lab, we're told we're going to have about 2,000 more people working over there in about four or five years. And that's going to be a very large diverse segment of the world coming in on that. They're going to be coming from all over the world because they have an investment in that now. From I believe 16 foreign nations have joined already and to help support that. So I think this message that we're sending and this illustration and this proud example of how a community comes together and explores its ethnicity and it ceases to enhance it and expand it, I think is a wonderful message for this town to have at this point in time. So I thank you all for your involvement and certainly the city and myself look forward to working very closely with you in the days ahead.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. It's an honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next thing is item 10, the proclamation honoring the 100th anniversary of the Realtors Association of the Fox Valley, Dan Chansett.
Your Honor, just a moment. Let me pull that up. All right, a proclamation. Whereas during the year of 2021, the Realtor Association of the Fox Valley will be celebrating and commemorating its 100th anniversary as a centennial organization that has provided far-sighted leadership along with training, education, and regulatory controls to ensure that the real estate industry serves to oversee the common good with a sense of fairness, vision, and inclusion. These industry values allow for all those working within the wide roles of property sales, broker, agency education, and open communications to fully realize the responsibilities and obligations necessary at all times to make real estate a successful and honorable career for all those holding a state license to practice. And whereas within the community of Batavia, the past 100 years has seen our city grow from a population of around 5,000 residents in 1920 to its current count of around 27,000 citizens. Found within this impressive story of ongoing population growth has been the constant efforts of those in the real estate workplace who have guided, negotiated, and overseen thousands of property transactions that have taken Batavia into the impressive legacy of quality community life that has become the trademark of our town. And whereas most deserving of praise and acknowledgement is the history of professional staff personnel within the ranks of the Realtor Association of Fox Valley, who for now, several generations has directed, advised, and counseled with thousands of real estate associates on how to perform their roles in the best ways possible. It certainly goes without saying that the Realtor Association of Fox Valley has truly left the most positive and sustaining history on the life throughout our beloved region in Illinois. Now therefore, mayor and members of Batavia City Council wish to congratulate and commend the Realtors Association of Fox Valley on reaching the 100th anniversary of their coveted and impactful work on helping to create the wondrous spirit of community life in each of the communities within their membership roles. Our town and its neighboring cities and villages have been extremely well-served and assisted in making life in our own towns friendly, welcoming places to proudly call home, thanks to the good work of the Realtor Association of Fox Valley. Signed, Jeffrey D. Shelkey, Mayor of Batavia. Your Honor, I would move that we approve the proclamation as read.
Second, not.
Moved by Alderman Chansett, second of Alderman, not for the approval of the proclamation for the Realtors Association of the Fox Valley. Any further discussion? Kirk called the roll.
Chansett?
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Darren?
Hi.
O'Brien?
Hi.
Callahan?
Hi.
Meitzler?
Hi.
Malley?
Hi.
Ewer?
Hi.
Jerome?
Hi.
McFadden?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Rosado?
Hi.
Beck?
Hi.
App?
Hi.
Proclamation is approved by a vote of 14 yes, no, no's, none absent. Thank you very much. Moving to item number 11, which is a monthly report from the Batavia Chamber of Commerce. And I saw Margaret Perrow here someplace on the screen. Margaret, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Sure. You're on.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Thank you for inviting me, giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I want to let you know the Batavia Chamber of Commerce continues to provide timely and valuable information and programs to help businesses adapt during these ever-changing times. We are very proud of how our local businesses have quickly and adeptly pivoted during the current crisis. Our local downtown retailers have developed a way to sell their goods online and offer convenient pickup or delivery options. Our restaurants all have pickup and delivery service. And as always, I encourage everyone to shop local to save local. A continuing function of the chamber is to be a conduit of information regarding grant funding available to our local businesses. Last week, the federal government approved $900 billion in coronavirus relief and a $1.4 trillion government spending bill that will provide funding for businesses and individuals impacted by the pandemic. This will fund the second round of the Paycheck Protection Program and which will again be facilitated by local banks. The U.S. Small Business Administration will be issuing revised regulations next week and the chamber will communicate the details as soon as we hear them. The chamber is continuing to offer many educational and networking opportunities with virtual options to help support our businesses. In fact, Howard, can I share my screen?
Hang on, Margaret, I can do that for you.
Thank you, Laura.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, it's a little slow in the draw.
That's all right.
No problem.
Teamwork.
Can you see? Sharing, this is sharing the Batavia Chamber Year in Review?
January 2021 City Council Presentation, yes.
No, that's not the one I wanted to share. Hold on. I was going, can I stop sharing that? I'm sorry. One second.
Do you want me to put it back to the agenda, Margaret?
Yes, please.
Sure thing.
Margaret, under sharing, you can choose which screen you would like to show.
Okay.
There's a sharing button and it just, it says show screen.
I apologize.
Not a problem. Earlier, we were discussing how each one of these platforms is different and it's hard to learn.
That's okay. I don't see the sharing screen now, but.
How about now?
Yes, I do. See, it's allowing me to pick which screen I want to share. That's okay. It's, it's, it's not essential. I could go on without it. Will you stop the share?
Sure, absolutely.
Sorry about that. What I was going to share was just, you'll see it in our Facebook posts and our weekly digest. If you read our weekly digest, it's a year in review of some of the events that the chamber has been involved in. And we continue to offer many educational events, as I mentioned. Some of our upcoming events, our, our Wednesday, January 6th at 8:00 a.m., our Not-for-Profit Forum, both Chris Low and Breda McKenna will be joining us this Wednesday, sharing Not-for-Profit and brainstorming, brainstorming at our mastermind on how to help our local service organizations. On Wednesday, January 13th at 8:00 a.m., we have our BC Squared, which is our virtual Batavia Chamber Breakfast Club, morning networking. On Wednesday, January 20th at 4:30 p.m. is our evening virtual networking for businesses to be able to build relationships and develop new leads for their businesses. On Thursday, January 21st at 9:00 a.m., that kicks off our very first of the Chamber Bootcamp Weekly Series to help businesses, business representatives become effective networkers. This is a multi-chamber event that is new that we, that we are developing to help you develop the best 30-second business elevator pitch. For all of our events, please register online at the batavichamber.org or contact me at the chamber. Now that it is officially the year 2021, I would like to announce the Batavia 2020 Citizen of the Year Award winner. The past honored recipients of the Citizen of the Year Award Committee have made this election to bestow the honor on Bob Hanson, owner of Funway Entertainment. Bob has been a community-oriented servant to Batavia since 1990 and it is a thrill to present this well-deserved award to him. The Batavia Interfaith Food Pantry and Closed Closet has been selected for the Spirit of Batavia Award because of their significant contributions to our community during this challenging year. In addition, many special projects and initiatives emerged during this past year that deserve special recognition. So the newly created, the newly created Batavia Community Impact Award is being given to Taking Care of Our Caretakers, a project led by Jamie Salmon, Sarah Vogel singer with Kurt Hagaman, Marcia Boyce, Abby Beck, Jamie Coke, and Katie O'Brien on the committee. Also being given this award this year is the Batavia Peace Rally, which Chris Low had mentioned. This was held June 30th, I mean June 3rd, sorry, 2020 and was led by Isabella Irish and Katia Smith. All awards, including the chamber's Ole Award winners typically would be presented in January during the annual Inspire Celebration. But because of the pandemic, this event has been rescheduled to May 2021. I will provide additional details as we get closer to the event. We are happy to share that despite the pandemic, we see much new economic activity and many new businesses have joined the Batavia Chamber, including Stronger Therapeutic Counseling Services, Windmill Grill and Pizzeria, Edward Jones Massey Fazel, and the Lakava Center. These are businesses that believe in the chamber's mission and desire the benefits from our membership. The 2021 Batavia Community Guide and Membership Directory is finalized and will be appearing in your mailboxes soon. The directory lists all the members of the Batavia Chamber. So if you are looking for a product or service, use the chamber's directory. The chamber was so pleased with the inaugural offering of Chamber Bucks this year, the citywide gift certificate program. These are gift certificates that can be used at more than 70 participating businesses in Batavia. Since June, the chamber has sold over $17,000 in Chamber Bucks and has donated an additional $5,000 of our own funds to boost our local economy. It's, is over $22,000 kept locally because of Chamber Bucks. We had orders from California, Colorado, Wisconsin, and many towns surrounding our area that purchased them as Christmas gifts for residences in our town. I would like to thank the city, the school district, and representatives of Kane County that they get, that gave them to their employees this holidays, this holiday season, and in turn, supported our local businesses. The chamber is helping to promote the support of our Batavia restaurants with the We Side with Batavia Restaurant promotion. This friendly competition continues this week featuring the Batavia Diner, Charlie Fax's, El Taco Grande, Swordfish, and Tusk. Order carry out from them and let the restaurant know what side of town you are from. See the Facebook, see Facebook for all the fun details. As always, I request that you follow the chamber on Facebook and check the chamber's website, batavichamber.org to register for our events, sign up as a business or community member, and that find out other pertinent information. Thank you, City Council, for allowing me to join your meeting tonight. Before I introduce my guest, is anybody have any questions for me? Great. Well, I would like to now introduce Jill Equi, the owner of Giabella Designs, the retail shop located on the first floor of the Newton House on Batavia Avenue. Jill, I will turn it over to you now so you can talk about what your wonderful business has brought to Batavia.
Thank you, Margaret. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
So first of all, thank you to the mayor, the council, and the chamber for inviting us to speak with you tonight. It is an honor. And just to give you a little background of who we are, I'm Jill. This is my husband, Jason. We're parents to four children. Jason works in the, we're a fire department. And I run our family business, Giabella Designs. Back in springtime, when COVID hit, we were faced with the dilemma of having to close up our business at its, at its previous location. So we were kind of forced with the fact that we would either have to close up our business or find somewhere else long-term. And we went on the search for a new location and we were very thrilled with the Batavia community. And we chose Batavia because we love the hometown feel of it. It's not, it's not like a touristy town. It's more home. And we're honored to be able to have our business in this town. We are an artisan market, so we have handcrafted and homemade home decor and goods, gifts. We have artisans more local, but when I say local, we have them all over the U.S. Our farthest artisan is in Hawaii. So we hope that we can help people with their small businesses and be able to build their small businesses now that, you know, there's no craft shows and vendor events. And this gives them one central location where they don't have to, you know, deal with just a weekend, a weekend gig, so to speak. They could have their stuff with us all, all year long or as long as they want to stay with us. Just give them an opportunity to build their business in the great community.
Uh, some quick numbers. Thank you again for having us. You know, we started in, in June, was when we opened our doors here in Batavia. And I'll be honest with you, you know, with COVID and the pandemic and the constraints that's put on not only retail, but just the general community, we're, we're very fortunate. The community in Batavia has really opened up their arms to us and we can't thank everyone enough. It's been fantastic, you know. We were looking at, at having to close our business. And then we, we took a chance at the Newton House and said, yeah, let's go take a look at it. And it turned out to be the best move we could have ever made. So you never know what the future will bring. You just have to keep on, keep on going. So I don't really have any projected sales figures for you guys because we only started in June and we haven't even had a full fiscal year, actually. But I can say that, you know, we've already expanded into another area of the Newton House on the first floor. And we're looking to continue to expand as our business grows. Hopefully, we can take on some employees. Right now, our artisans volunteer their time. And that's hopefully something we can look to branch out in, in the future. Some of the things we've been looking forward to, especially with the, the city council, I can't thank everyone enough for all their support. You know, we're looking at doing, having an ordinance looked at so we can host some sipping craft events and those sorts of things. And the mayor and his staff have been fantastic with that. So thank you again. You know, the, the cooperation has been great. The folks over at the chamber have been fantastic as well. I can't, I can't say it enough. I don't think that there's, I don't think there's a future for us anywhere else but Batavia, and I wouldn't want there to be. You know, we, we really have, we lucked out when we, when we chose Batavia. It was a good central location for our business and for our artisans. We have stuff from all over the, the area. We have stuff from all over the area that comes in. Reclaimed lumber, reclaimed antiques and things like that that we refurbished, custom-made goods or something you can't just get anywhere, but you can get it here. And that's largely in part to us being able to move. So we appreciate that opportunity very much. Some of the things that we're looking to do in the future, obviously some sip and craft events and those sorts of things obviously require a lot of support, and it's been challenging, especially in this COVID environment that we live in. Doing porch drops and porch pickups, as it were, they can still do that at the Newton House. It's a house. But you know, part of what we're trying to do is to try to build a place where people can come and look for that handmade, handcrafted item. And if you are a purveyor of handcrafted items, this is a place you can come and get into brick and mortar without all of the trouble. That's what we do. We handle all the trouble of brick and mortar. So that's kind of what we do. It's very much a labor of love, and it's growing. Even in this environment, it grows like a dandelion in the sidewalk. So we're very fortunate and can't thank everyone enough.
We're thrilled to be part of the Newton House, to bring life back into it when it sat vacant for so long. So it's been nice to bring it back to what it was originally. So we are currently open. We're open Wednesdays through Saturdays, 10 to 4, and then Sunday, 11 to 3. And we can be found on, our website is GiabellaDesigns.com, and we're also on Facebook and Instagram as well.
And for those of you who have not been in, and thank you for the ones who have, but if you haven't been in, you'd like to come see it. We refinished most of the floors on the first floor and brought back the original woodwork from 1878, and they're absolutely gorgeous. So please come in and see us, 11 North Batavia Street, or Batavia Avenue, sorry. We'd love to have anybody come in that would like to come and see it. We'd love to show it to you.
I'm so glad that you mentioned all of the work that you have done on the interior of the place. It really looks so great and obviously took a great deal of your own time to do because I know the two of you did all of that work yourself, and it turned out great.
Thank you. We've had a lot of help from BEI. They've done wonderful. They're very, very wonderful to work with. And when we walked in and saw the building, we were on the same wavelength of what we saw for the future of the Newton House. And it's nice to be on the same page and get it to where it's supposed to be again.
Yeah, I mean, the folks at BEI, honestly, I can't thank them enough personally. Austin and all of his team, when I pulled up the carpet in the hallway and I saw that flooring parquet, I was like, oh my gosh, we've got to do this. And they took a chance on us. And I can't thank them enough for that because it gave us the opportunity to bring life back into that. So please come and see it. We'd love to show it to you.
Well, we thank you for appearing tonight, and certainly thank you for your kind comments about the spirit of Batavia that's building in our downtown. There's a lot of voices and talents and energies that are all helping to contribute to that. So I thank you for joining the club and being a bright shining star on the west side there of the new and great things that are happening in our downtown. So thank you and look forward to many years of having you as part of our downtown.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, everyone.
Margaret, anything else? Are you done?
Nope, that was it. Thank you very much, Mayor.
All right. Well, thank you for a very nice report. Okay, we'll move to item number 12, which is going to be a discussion on One Washington Place Construction Access and Street Closures. And Alderman Callahan, you're the development chairman. Do you want to introduce this? Or I'll hand it off to you, and you go from here.
Thank you, Your Honor. I know Laura wrote the memo on this, and she's put a lot of work into it, so I will turn it over to her.
Thank you, Alderman Callahan. I'd like to begin by saying that with regard to the One Washington Place Project, which is a public-private partnership and large-scale development in our downtown, really, the greatest wish for this project is that it's a tremendous success for all involved, whether it be from the city's perspective or the developer's perspective, but the community's perspective and our business owners' perspective and our other property owners downtown, that this project will have a future positive impact on all of those things. But I know that our business community recently shared some of the current concerns that they have too, and those are very important concerns that we should attend to and address. But I don't think they're insurmountable problems. And based on conversations that we have recently had with the developer, I'm hoping through our discussion tonight that we might be able to put some minds at ease as well as address those concerns. By way of background, I understand that there are concerns as to how this project is going to impact access to North River Street and as well what types of construction activities may be taking place on that street. Access and potential disruption to public use and public property is something that has been part of the redevelopment agreements associated with this project since 2016. In the most recent iteration of the redevelopment agreement, there is a paragraph 1.07 that is called disruption of public use or public property. And I think it would be good for us to start with that basis to know the rights and obligations of the parties that were set forth in that paragraph. So I'll just take a moment to read it. "The developer shall undertake the completion of the project in a manner that is in the best interest of the project while acknowledging that the redevelopment site is bordered in part by public streets and walks. Developers shall perform all acts reasonably necessary to provide for continued public use of such affected sidewalks and streets without delaying the project. The developer shall not disrupt public use of city streets, city sidewalks, and other city property without prior approval by the city of a reasonable detour plan, which approval of the city shall not be unreasonably withheld, conditioned, or delayed. And the developer shall use diligent good faith and reasonable efforts at all times and in a manner consistent with the project plan to minimize the disruption to the public and to obtain any approvals required of the state IDOT affecting roads under state jurisdictions such as Washington Street and Wilson Street, both of which function as part of Illinois Route 25 with the cooperation of the city. Both parties acknowledge that some road closures will be necessary at some time or times during the construction of the project that may extend for weeks or months, but the parties shall coordinate together to minimize those closures and specifically to minimize any closures of that portion of the roads that are part of Illinois Route 25." We have had several meetings about the project, certainly committee of the whole meetings and city council meetings at which the redevelopment agreement was under review, and we were deciding whether to make changes and to continue with the project. I can remember several times where questions about specifically access to North River Street was a topic of discussion at those meetings. We made clear to the developer how important North River Street is to our town. We've made a significant investment, and that being one of the primary meeting spaces. We know that it is extremely important to several of our downtown businesses as well. And at each one of those meetings, the developer expressed his understanding of that and also gave a commitment to just stay off of that road to a great extent. I'm happy that Dave Patzelt is here with us tonight from Shodin, and I would like to turn it over to him at this point for him to show you a map of what the potential road closures and/or the construction fencing around the project is expected to look like. So at this time, going to give the screen control to Dave Patzelt. Dave, thanks for being with us tonight.
Thanks very much. You can hear me, Laura?
Yes, I can.
And you can see the map that was prepared to talk about lane closures?
Yes, you may want to make it just a touch bigger if you can.
Okay, now you're going to challenge me here.
I know. I'm sorry.
Let's see here.
Maybe view?
View, okay.
And zoom.
Zoom?
Yeah, and the plus, there you go. One right above that.
Dynamic zoom?
Oh, I don't... Well, let's just go with this. There you go.
Okay, does that help?
Yes, it does.
Okay, for purposes of discussion, I'm going to start in the southeast corner of the property or basically at the corner of Washington and Wilson. I've taken the aerial photograph, and on that photograph, I have identified a red dotted line around the perimeter of the property which identifies a construction fence that will be installed around the entire site. Some areas of that fence may be installed on top of a concrete barrier wall, such as down here along Wilson Street, where we plan to close the parallel parking lane and the sidewalk. So that at that location, most likely, the fence will be on a concrete barrier to protect the fence and motorists as they travel westbound on Wilson Street. That fence or barrier wall, there will be a gate at the east end where I've identified a gate at that location. That gate could be open to allow trucks to access, delivery trucks and/or cranes to access behind or on the north side or on the project side of the barrier wall and/or the fence. And then the gate would be closed so that motorists coming westbound would not be confused as to where they may or may not travel. Also, you move to what I'll refer to as the alley. At the alley intersection with Wilson, again, there would be a set of gates that could be opened to allow that truck or delivery vehicle or crane to exit back out onto Wilson Street without having to back up into the intersection of Wilson and Washington. The fence would then follow generally north behind the retail restaurants and bar buildings that front on River Street. It would then follow down the property line of the bar and come out to River Street, where it would then turn north. And generally, it would be, I know there's no real identifiable curb of River Street, but it would follow in essence that curb lane of where the planters are along River Street, closing the sidewalk, the east sidewalk only of River Street, only closing it north of the bar where the project property line generally is at. The reason for closing that street is severalfold. One, keep in mind that we have a zero setback building, so we need to take down the parking deck, the foundation. So when we pull the foundation out of the ground, we need to peel that sidewalk back. And then when we're putting in the new foundation, we would need that sidewalk, in essence, peeled back. Once that foundation is in and the building starts to get constructed, we want to prevent anybody from walking along the face of the building if something were to fall or drop between the building and that construction fence. The fence would continue north along generally that curb line, and we would be closing State Street. The fence would go to the curb, what I'll call the north curb of State Street, and then run in an east-west direction. Keep in mind that State Street does partially get reconstructed as part of this project, and so it will be reconstructed and will need to keep people off for that reason. But more importantly for us, we're trying to limit the construction access mainly to State Street. That's not to say that there may be a periodic delivery or something that has to come in along one of the other streets, such as I described along Wilson Avenue. Another example along River Street could be, let's say that the brick delivery shows up to be delivered to the west face of the building along River Street. The truck may pull up in the right-hand lane, would be the gates or the fence would be pulled back, the material would be offloaded from the truck, the fence would be put back, and the truck would move on. So that's what I'm referring to as a periodic-type delivery, but there's no intent to close River Street. Staging of traffic, construction vehicles, trucks that are waiting to be offloaded predominantly would remain on State Street. And then they will be either able to enter or exit at River or enter or exit through a set of gates at Washington. The pedestrian sidewalk on the north side of that curb, north side of State Street, would be entirely open so that pedestrians could go from River Street to Washington along that sidewalk, and that would be unobstructed. And then out at Washington, in essence, that fencing and barrier, potential barrier will be installed along the curb line. We also know that at some point, there is a widening during our construction that will need to occur at Washington and State for a left turn lane to go from northbound Washington to westbound State Street. So during the construction of that turn lane, there could be lane movements or, in essence, pushing traffic to one side or either to the west side or the east side of Washington. Again, no complete closures other than a periodic delivery or something, or a flagman or something like that blocking traffic, but no closures of Washington. I put a series of notes on this map that hopefully will help you better understand my descriptions to you. But as we have indicated repeatedly to the city staff, it's not our intent nor to close River Street. We have no objection if somebody wanted to put no construction traffic signs that would prevent construction traffic from going down River Street. However, we all know that sometimes there can be a rogue driver who maybe doesn't understand no construction traffic and will end up driving down the street. But it's not our intent to be using River Street as a construction thoroughfare or closing the street down. Certainly, if that street is closed for dining, outdoor dining during construction, we have no objection to that and probably would prefer that. That may actually prevent anybody from going down the street. That generally gives you an outline of what our plan is. The project is scheduled for about a two-year project. I can tell you, our project down in Oswego was ahead of schedule, and there were some street closures down there. Those street closures were mainly due to complete reconstruction of three of the streets around the project in comparison to this project where we're only doing some reconstruction or rehabilitation on one of the four streets around the project. So if somebody was to say, well, why did you close three streets down in Oswego? The reason was mainly because those streets were totally taken out of commission, new sewer water, complete underground, raising of the street, new pavement, new curb, new sidewalks, et cetera. That's why those were closed. Hopefully, that gives you a brief, and I'm available for questions or comments regarding the fence and lane closure, if there are. regarding the, uh, the fence and lane closure, if there, if there are any questions.
Thank you, Dave. I just wanted to, uh, wrap up my comments by talking a little bit about, uh, the fact that we, that any large-scale development project like this is a, uh, good communication plan to, um, provide updates and a means of two-way communication to, uh, everyone who is adjacent to the project and affected by the construction, but also the community as a whole. Um, COVID has presented challenges that have learned, have, have taught us to communicate in new ways that might actually be more efficient for a project such as this. Um, when we were expecting to get construction underway in 2017, the city held some in-person meetings in city council chambers to get feedback and provide information to the property owners and business owners in the area. That was followed by setting up some in-person meetings on the street. Unfortunately, as you know, the project hit, um, some challenges that required us to put our construction plans on hold. As we look forward to construction beginning later this year, we will, uh, renew the communications with the business and property owners in the area in partnership with our wonderful Main Street Organization and Chamber of Commerce and look not only for ways to communicate about the project, but also to come up with some creative ways of assisting, uh, business. I know there's a concern that during construction that perhaps customers will, uh, be discouraged from visiting those businesses, but I think COVID has presented us with a terrific example of the way that our community, when asked to show up for our business community, does just that. People realize through COVID how important a vibrant downtown business community is and that that doesn't happen without local support. So we hope to rally that local support in, um, support of those businesses that are located near the project during these two years that it will be under construction. And, um, with that, I just don't have any further, um, comments. Alderman Serrano?
Yes, um, I, I, I like, uh, the way this discussion's gone. I have a concern or, or a favor, I guess, that I don't think will be a, a, a difficult thing based on the intent here, but some of the words in Provision 1.07 are so loose and I think the intent is good there, but it's, I, I'd like to see some verbiage changes just to give us better assurances. You know, there's, there's words like, you know, minimizing disruption means nothing. Um, there's a commitment to a great extent. I, I don't know what that means, you know, they're, they're good phrases, but I, I think, uh, we can, I, I'd like a little better assurances on that provision that River Street stays open and, and, you know, obviously if there's some deliveries or some short-term things where, where, um, were understandable, but I want to make sure that, uh, there are better assurances.
Alderman Serrano, Dave Patzelt, I, I, I don't have any, and if you wanted to add or tweak some language, I, I, I think we, uh, from day one many years ago, we, we talked about this being a partnership and I have to be a good partner and, and that, uh, and the city needs to be a good partner. If I, if I become a troublemaker down there and I'm making a mess, uh, there's going to be other issues and other problems that are, are going to come of that. Um, we started out, uh, when we thought we were moving forward with the project initially and we, uh, offered and actually I personally attended and had the project manager with me to attend a meeting, uh, with all of the downtown businesses, uh, at City Hall with city staff. Um, we would do the same as we did down in Oswego. We started those, uh, on a two-week basis and we learned that, uh, after the first couple of meetings, the, uh, businesses understood where they could get the information. Uh, they could attend and talk openly with the contractor, with the city staff. Uh, it, um, and those meetings went from every two weeks to a month to then every, uh, six, eight weeks, and then it became just a, uh, an email newsletter. Um, some things that came out of that meeting were everything from concerns of road closures, but also, uh, requests on our part. Uh, we know that construction workers need to eat. Uh, it, it's famous, uh, the double word is the roach coach that shows up on construction projects. We don't want, Shadine doesn't like a roach coach. We would prefer that local businesses, uh, step up perhaps to provide lunch, uh, or meals to, uh, to the construction workers. Um, we could not get, uh, a local restaurant to volunteer down in Oswego and, uh, after the, one restaurant began to get daily orders of 50, uh, 50 lunches to be delivered to the, uh, to the site every day, uh, that restaurant said this is going to be one of our main business, uh, our, our main businesses. And sure enough, that restaurant every day was delivering lunches to the, uh, to the construction site. Um, so there's a, there's a lot of, uh, I'll say cooperation that needs to occur, uh, and we want the businesses to succeed. We want the businesses to be part of, uh, of the project. Uh, we know that there are going to be people that come down on a daily basis to sit and watch the, uh, the construction. Um, so, but at the same time, we need to keep those people safe and at, uh, safe distances. Um, so, uh, I have no objection to, if you want to tweak the language, but no matter what we say in that paragraph, uh, we need to cooperate, we want to cooperate and, uh, it, it needs to be a, a, a two-way street. And the last thing I would want to do is be getting into a, a debate with somebody, uh, about what a sentence, a sentence or, uh, words in a sentence mean about, uh, about cooperation. Um, you know, that, we all know it. I get upset at a building, building inspector and a building inspector gets upset with me and all of a sudden you've got, uh, you've got problems. And the first one that's going to get a call, uh, Laura will get the call, she'll call the building inspector, the building inspector will come down to the site and all of a sudden there's going to be, uh, there's going to be issues. So, um, sure, change whatever language you want to propose. I don't, I, I don't know that the language, uh, other than giving you some assurance that the language is there will do much. It really amounts to, uh, Shadine, the contractors, the subcontractors and everybody working together to make the, uh, the project, project a success.
Yeah, and I appreciate that and, and e- every good partnership starts with good intentions. Um, and I don't foresee any issues, but what I heard earlier is that it's fine for us to set up tables and have outdoor dining and planning on that for two years of construction.
Yes.
Yes, we have no objection, uh, no objection to that. And let's, uh, we, e- even if there is a planned event that is to occur down there, we would like to know that that event is planned so that we can secure our areas for that planned event. Um, and it, uh, again, experienced down in Oswego, when there was a planned event, everything from a Christmas walk, we knew it was coming to a, uh, to a march in the park, uh, to whatever it was, we, uh, we secured our space, made sure everything was open and, you know, there was, uh, free movement and that was, uh, inspected by fire departments and, uh, and the police department. So again, it's, it's a cooperation. We know what the intentions are of, uh, whether it's the chamber, uh, or a special event and, uh, we can prepare ourselves and, and you, the, you, the city know, uh, if we're having a special, uh, equipment delivery or something that may need to come in for a couple hours on the street, we, we would be letting the, uh, the city know of those sorts of things.
Jim, thank you.
I think Alderman, you're had his hand up?
Yeah, something that didn't occur to me, uh, until you just mentioned it, uh, Mr. Patzelt, is, um, that you're going to be peeling back the sidewalk on River Street there. Is there going to be warranty for the work as, as you replace it that, that is, um, going to last? Obviously we spent a lot of money on that street and we'd like warranty on that work.
The short answer is yes. Consistent with any other work done in the public right away, yes, I have to, uh, warranty that work.
Okay.
Uh, Alderman, oh, I'm sorry. Did you have an additional?
Alderman Knop, ready? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, I didn't hear anybody. I'll jump in. You know, I, I know you said you're, you're redoing, um, one street, while you also have to do the, the left turn lane, correct?
That's correct. So the left turn lane of, uh, northbound Washington, northbound Washington to westbound State Street. So that left turn lane requires a widening at that, uh, at that intersection.
Most of, uh, um, State Street, the reconstruction's at the tail end of construction. Does it, does the whole street have to be completely closed for the entire two years? Or can that be just halfway closed and have a one-way westbound?
Uh, initially it will be closed and I would say for at least one year. Uh, in Oswego, we're down to, I would say at about the 14-month, 15-month period. Again, there we're ahead of schedule, we were able to open all of, uh, all of the streets. So the, uh, the, the, the goal would be to, uh, once we get the, uh, building under roof and the building enclosed, that we could then potentially open up, uh, open up the, uh, State Street to get the, uh, east and/or westbound or both of them, uh, flowing again. But I don't want to give you a promise, uh, that, that yes, it's going to be open on the 12th month and then something comes up where we can't get, uh, cannot get it open. Uh, but, uh, we'd like to get it open as, as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you.
Alderman Malay? Oh, I'm sorry, it was Alderman Knop next. Apologize, Joe.
Oh, that's all right. Um, I got a question with respect to the fencing that is at the southwest corner. There, uh, it runs north along the building that houses Boca Ditos along that alleyway. I believe some of the businesses on State, on, uh, River Street right now, their garbage pickup uses that alleyway. The two years that that fence is wrapped around there, will the garbage trucks be able to get back in there and, and service those businesses? Or are they going to have to find other ways to take care of what's going on with their normal daily operations?
The, uh, the garbage will need to be coordinated, um, in between, and I'm sorry, I, um, there is a, um, south of the, and help me here, of, uh, of the hair salon, there is a, is an alleyway that does have some garbage cans in it. The garbage cans are all generally wheeled, uh, wheeled dumpsters or containers. Uh, we could leave, if they were going to keep the garbage cans on the east side of the restaurants in that alley, we could leave a walkway for those, uh, to be wheeled out to, um, out to Wilson, uh, Wilson Street where they could be, uh, picked up. Um, if they could be put into the alley and coordinated at the, uh, the alley south of the, uh, the hair salon, that may be, may be better. Um, again, at, uh, I think it, uh, one of the details of this project is that eventually all of those garbage cans are relocated into the actual parking garage, uh, and into a, uh, an enclosed dumpster, dumpster area. So everybody working together will hopefully end up with a better product, uh, at, uh, at the end, which is a, uh, garbage within a, uh, enclosed area of the, uh, of the parking structure.
But I'm, I've seen more than just small wheeled cans in that area. I know one of the restaurants in particular has a grease pickup and I don't believe that's something that we want to wheel out to Wilson Street, especially when you've removed all the on-street parking on Wilson Street. Where would that garbage truck locate itself and what kind of traffic congestion would it create to keep those businesses running in their normal operations?
Alderman Knop, back in 2017, when we expected that, um, construction was going to be coming in that fall, um, and Gary Holm was deeply involved in this as well, we went to all of the different, uh, businesses that had garbage collection in the alley that would be affected by the construction to ascertain what their current contracts were and it was our goal to, uh, collaborate with those individual businesses to determine a plan for collection of refuse during the time of construction. So that is definitely something that we will assist with coordinating, um, uh, the garbage collection during construction for those businesses.
Now, I, my concerns will be twofold. One is that it doesn't get picked up on a regular basis and it turns into a health condition, something that the health department will want to take action on. And the second is any increased cost for garbage collection that the businesses suddenly have to take on because they're normal operating, the normal way the garbage, uh, collectors go about it has to change. So I, I could see one negative impact.
I, I agree. We wouldn't want to impose those negative impacts on the area businesses and, um, and, and the health concerns are valid because a restaurant and, uh, bar operation need pick up far more often than, uh, a place of business like a, uh, yoga studio. And so that's why we wanted to meet individually with each one of the different types of businesses that were located there to find out what kind of, uh, schedule that they were on, who they were using, if we might be able to collaborate with just one of the, um, suppliers at not an increased cost to those businesses to come up with a solution for them. But we will definitely address those concerns.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, next I believe was Alderman Malay.
Uh, yes, thank you, Laura. Um, a question, uh, what is the vehicle weight limit on the South River Street warnerf?
Um, I am not sure of the, uh, weight limit. Uh, I think Gary might be on the call. He, he might not, might know, but I do regularly see large delivery trucks on that street, um, delivering, you know, uh, beer and things like that, of that nature. So I'm not sure if it's a, uh, you know, what tonnage limit.
Yeah, I would just be concerned about that, uh, warnerf, uh, you know, uh, construction deliveries, construction equipment can be significantly more than, uh, other deliveries that, that is there. So I think that's something we definitely need to
Absolutely. We can do, um, one of the things that, um, the developer mentioned in his presentation is that he is fine with us, um, posting no construction traffic allowed on North Street. So, and, and also he mentioned that, I know we were talking about converting North River Street to one-way and we have currently an, an application to IDA, IDOT to that effect, but just because we received the permit doesn't mean that we have to make it a one-way street. If we wanted to not allow any traffic on North River Street, we could close North River Street just as we did this year and make it an outdoor public dining area. And that would ensure that it is, uh, closed anything whatsoever.
Yeah, my concern is the construction deliveries that the developer talked about being done on River Street there with the gates opening to, to offload. And whether there's heavy equipment going to be offloaded there. Well, definitely something I think we need to have a look at because that could be devastating to, hey, but, you know, crush that, the warnerf.
Right.
Yeah, Alderman Malay, that, the, with the exception of the intersection, the State and North River Street intersection is constructed a little differently, but the rest of that block actually is two streets. It's an underlying whole concrete pavement, which really could have been a standalone road all by itself. And then on top of that, it's got a brick road. So there are really two roads for most of the warnerf. Um, mostly is at the intersection because the intersection is built to be, um, permeable pavement. So there is no concrete underneath the, the, the intersection. It, it, it just sits on a large bed of gravel. Well, that's, that's more of, uh, of an issue. Um, but again, I, I don't, I don't foresee an issue except with, you know, loads that would exceed 80,000 pounds. Uh, that, that'd be my one concern and, and, and I, I think the developer's already aware of that and And as we've said, the North River is not the main construction entrance. Main construction entrance is elsewhere. And so I really, I think we just need to be careful about delivering that North River Street and keep them limited.
I believe Alderman Rosato, you had your hand up before?
Yeah, yes. And this kind of couples with what Alderman Malay was saying. The constructed, construction traffic is going to take a toll on all our roads. And do we have money in TIF or the budget earmarked for repair costs on those roads? Or is that the responsibility of developer?
Washington Street and Wilson Street are both state routes.
Okay.
And State Street.
And the ones being reconstructed.
Part of this project.
Right, okay.
So yes, it's the developer.
Thank you.
Sure. And next I saw Alderman Baron.
Hi, thanks, Laura. And Dave, thanks for bringing this drawing tonight to allow everybody to see the aerial of the construction site. I think this puts a lot of ease to many people and the concerns. A couple of questions that I have. Is there going to be work going on on Saturdays?
Well, yes.
Okay. And is there going to be something put in place for the workers in the parking? Especially on Saturdays, if they're going to be doing Saturdays? And if we're going to continue to keep the farmer's market on that area? Or do we need to consider moving the farmer's market to another location in the city? At least for next year, you know, to Water Street?
We we often we get many of the construction workers parking within the fenced area. They have their trucks with tools and and equipment that they're that they're bringing in. Some construction workers may be parking off-site. And I. I guess I regarding the farmer's market, I would have mixed feelings. There's pros, there's pros and cons to to relocating it off-site. Believe it or not, the construction workers, it wouldn't surprise me that you see them going down there and buying things. So for on behalf of the sellers of products, it might be nice to have them down there. People, we have, we know that people come down and watch construction. So they may be there and stop and buy something, but I would leave that up to you. I don't know or don't foresee that the farmer's market is going to get in the way of any any construction, construction worker, construction activities.
Yeah, Laura, I'd like to, you know, definitely have some sort of plan put together for the construction workers. Because I would hate to take up any close parking, you know, for our customers and our our citizens that come to our city. I know construction workers can walk, so, but not miles upon miles on that. So that is one thing that I I would definitely would like to see, you know, put together and coordinated together. There have been some concerns that are brought up. And I do know that for this year in TIF 1, we do have $50,000 that's budgeted for River Street lighting. I would like to make a suggestion that maybe we hold off on that lighting for this year until the construction is over and really sub decide that money for some construction support for our businesses if necessary. And some of that could be used to in coordination with Main Street and the businesses in the Chamber of Commerce.
I would agree with you, Alderman, and I would take that one step further is that certainly the River Street lighting would want to be coordinated with our new building as our new building will have lighting on the building that will cast out into into River Street. And coordinating those two may be beneficial to both of us.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Baron. Is there anyone else on City Council who hasn't had an opportunity to ask questions or make a comment? If not, we would like to turn it over for public comments. And the way that we do public comments on these go-to webinars is there is a little raised hand icon that you can click to let me know if you would like to make a comment on this discussion. If you are unable to find that, there is also a place where you can type in a chat, a question to me. And if you let me know in the chat that you would like to speak, I'll also be checking there. But right now I'm going to scroll down. And and then after you speak, if you could then take your, I want to speak hand down, I'll know that you have no further comments. So I'm going to look down the list and see if I find any raised hands. Okay, the first one that I'm coming to is James Joseph. I have unmuted your microphone on my side, but it says that you're self-muted on your side. So there you go.
I should be unmuted now.
Thank you.
I'm going to start off real quick by saying, number one, I am glad, I I I have heard for quite some time from folks involved in the city that there was discussion that River Street would have to be the location of a crane. I'm glad that that's not going to happen. I'm just going to say that flat out. I'm glad that's over with. I'm glad that discussion has ended because that was still going around. And looking, looking at the, looking at the plan right now. Is River Street being open is incredibly crucial. I'm glad that that decision was made. I do not want, I I think it's imperative, if any time that our special events on River be kept, it would be during this construction. That is absolutely necessary as long as we're not talking about any chance of injury. And I I worked in emergency safety equipment for years, so I understand what it's like at a construction site. I know I had to put my hard head on every time I put my vest on. I know what it's, I I have an idea of what it's like. So I understand if we have people down there too much. But I also believe the more that we can have people down there, the better. And not only that, the better it would be for this project. I do think it's too big, but that's neither here nor there. Laura, you kind of touched on this, and I want to really want to drive this home. The most important thing that has to be involved in not only this project, but in any future project going forward, there has to be communication with the surrounding businesses, people involved, not just on a Facebook group. Because before you know it, I were getting called all kinds of different things, including Sylvia and not Plath. So I think it's imperative that this. One of the reasons why I started the business where I did after I moved, after I moved here was because there was a support system in place because Batavia is way more socialist than it will ever admit. You have organizations in this town that are supposed to support and communicate with businesses. And I'm going to be honest with you. The drag feet response to what we wanted on River during the street closure gives me a lot of, it gives me a lot, a tremendous amount of reservation that we are going to actually get that kind of response. So Jennifer, I do, I do appreciate your idea about the 50,000 being laid off, it being set aside for for businesses and business support. I I totally get where you're coming from. But also, I don't know how many of you walk down River Street at night. But even with lights in the trees, there's not much lighting at all. And we could, we can't depend upon Melissa's lights coming out of River's Edge in order to illuminate all of River. It's not going to work that way. But so the ideas being put forth are fine as long as the communication continues. Because we've been looking at it, and forgive me for my analogies, but we've been looking at an apocalyptic scenario for several of our downtown businesses who have, who are not only have a business here, they have their lives writing on it and they're residents here. So they're people that not only have their business, they live here, but they're also people that come into my shop as well. And while things may not affect my shop directly, if they affect the other shops, then that affects me. Because if Melissa or Bar Evolution or the Tea Tree or Six Plus Cypress are hindered in any way, that's going to hinder me because we're all in this together, and I'm not just talking about COVID. Post-COVID, I think that's probably part of the biggest meteor crater kind of thing that I've I've talked about is that post-COVID, this has to be handled really, really well by everybody that has the chance to communicate and contribute and and support businesses. Because the community will come out as long as the community is aware. And we will contribute to develop, we will, we will contribute our input to developments as long as we know what the heck is going on. And that's, and and it can't come, and it can't come down to phone calls, just phone calls from Alderman. I mean, over the last few years, the most communication I've had is Mark, who's done a really great job, Marty, Joe, Abby. And I don't mean to eliminate any folks. I'm not saying you didn't. But I'm just saying those are the ones that pop out right out of my head. And these are people who work regular day jobs, have families, and then have to make phone calls every every Monday or Sunday or whenever, just to find out where we're at. To me, that shouldn't be how we should be operating. We have things in place. So if we can. If my biggest concern right now is that the other, I'm looking at this plan, it doesn't affect my business. It seriously affects Classic Tattoo. I don't know if Rich is on the call or if Rich is involved. But we're going to, I I really call upon these organizations to think about Rich over at Classic. Because right now, it's almost like he doesn't exist in this plan. And I understand, Dave, why you have to do what you do according to the plan that you have. But for his particular business, that's putting him, he's he's there, but now he's he's basically a brick and mortar that doesn't exist unless people take that sidewalk. So if we're going to, if if this project is going to go forward, everybody's, everything that is, that makes Batavia what it is, has to be performing well. And if we don't have continuity and we don't have the kind of communication, all of us are going to struggle, including Shoby through this project. That's essential. With the same, I appreciate the respect that's being spoken by Dave to our businesses. But we've also got to come together in every way, shape or form. If you want it, if you're asking us to go through this, then we're going to have to see something better than what, than some of the things that we experienced during COVID. When we had the chance to do something really cool and then it took forever and the only street that anybody seemed to know about was Water Street. So.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt the speaker, but I wanted to address him when he's when he's done.
Oh, yeah, go on. I'm here.
As far as the communication, I, sure, there's social media, there's texting, there's tweeting, there's emails that can go out, etc. I think the best form of the communication and what was a success for us down in Oswego is that a face-to-face meeting, whether it's once a week or every two weeks, where anybody in the audience can ask their specific questions. And you have myself and the project manager from the construction project there in person and can answer your specific question and have a discussion face-to-face with the with each other. And then also get to know each other face, face-to-face. So if there is an immediate issue down, down at the site or, you know, along the street somewhere that the business proprietor can go directly, you know, to the project manager and say, hey, this is happening. Can you do something about it? So to me, that's the best form of communication. And I offer that to, offer that to you and recommend that we do that. And just as long as those meetings remain civil and everybody, you know, has the same spirit of of working together, I I I offer that and am willing to to do that. I I understand your concern about closing State Street. Unfortunately, I, this is a zero-lot line building. And I, it's a large building. And I don't want construction traffic backed up on all different streets and everybody's up in the air. So to restrict them to one of the streets, I tried to pick the street that is least impactful to to everybody. But it's not that it's going to not impact everyone. So I I believe that's the least impactful. However, are there things that we and the city might be able to do? Sure. Could there be signs installed, and we've seen it in other communities, signs down at the corner that allow or advertise the business and indicate that the sidewalk is open? Things of of that sort that could help the the businesses on the the north side of State Street. City would need to be involved for permitting, you know, is, who pays for, who pays for the sign? What does the sign say, etc., etc.? So I I would suggest that as a means of assisting that that business or the proprietors on on that street.
Dave, another thing you mentioned is there's an opportunity to put a skin on the construction fencing itself. And that perhaps we could partner in advertising our downtown businesses that are adjacent to the project as part of that skin that's on the fencing.
Absolutely. So and allow those businesses to get their own six-foot by eight-foot section and they can say or illustrate or narrate whatever they would like to on that, on that portion of the the construction fencing.
Could.
Again, as long as it's respectful.
Could we also maybe think about because of what some of these businesses are going to be going through during this time, maybe we could be a little bit lax on the sidewalk signage that is allowed? Because, you know, I would hate, I would hate for.
I'm just.
We're, we're forcing, yeah, we're forcing, we're forcing. Yeah, we were forcing, forcing Rich to take a big brunt of this. And. Sign on both corners without, without him having to run down to City Hall and get a permit. He just throws out a sign every every Sunday or every every day that he's down there, walk right down here. Then that way it makes his life a lot easier. He doesn't have to go through the permit process. And and just make it, let's just make it a, like on New Year's Eve than anybody's ever, anybody's able to park anywhere. Make it that way for signs along this entire corridor. So that we don't worry about those kind of regulations.
Laura Scott here. We do have a provision in our zoning code that involves construction projects. And we do have some significant leniency on signage for that purpose. We utilize that as part of the Wilson Street project and the Houston Street project. So there is a lot of leniency for, you know, advertising businesses during a construction project like that.
Great. Okay, anything else, James?
I think I covered everything that I can. You know, like I said, I I I think it's too big, but, you know, I, I know, I know. And I see, I see you laughing, Dave. I I I understand why. You probably heard it since 2017. It's just if this goes forward, the focus of the beauty of our old-school downtown area is going to be taken away. So I call upon anyone and everyone that has the ability, whether it be social media, elected office, any kind of nonprofit organization that is endorsed by the city to make sure that they are using every tool they can to advertise what River Street looks like. So that we don't, so that that is not forgotten. Because that side of the facade has stood just as these businesses. So that we don't, so that that is not forgotten because that side of the facade has stood just as these business owners still stand. And that's really all I have to say.
Okay. Thank you. Um. Would you, oh, I'm sorry.
Laura, this is Mike O'Brien.
Hi, Mike.
I just, just for James's benefit, you know, what Dave said, I wholly agree with. You know, and I would recommend, you know, start out these meetings with Dave and his project manager, possibly the superintendent once a week. People get to know each other. Everyone should have the superintendent's phone number. And if there's any issues that happen to arise, they can call him and he can be proactive and, and get on it right away.
Yes.
And, uh, but, but you know, those meetings are going to be very vital because if any kind of scheduling that a business might have, they got to get it to the contractor so he can address that and make sure he's prepared to accommodate that business. And, and they, they, they talk weekly, they, communication is going to be key for everything. And the project, as large as it is, can go quite smoothly without too much imposition on anybody if they understand what's coming at them. Uh, the, the contractor understands what the, the, the businesses are requiring and the businesses know what the contractor is going to be doing on whatever streets and keeps them apprised of how their schedule is, is being implemented. So, you know, communication is going to be, that's going to be the key to all of it and it can go quite smoothly then.
And, and I just want to drive home one more last time. It is imperative that all those special events that occur on River stay on River. Because if that street matters as much as, as every one of those bricks says, then that, of those events have to stay down there, every one of them. If we have the hope of bringing them back safely and securely at any point, then we need to do that because that is crucial to the survival of every business around there, not just mine. Cause I can go online whenever I want. I don't want to. And that's all I have to say.
So, so Dave, that, that would mean for you also, I mean, it takes some special care when we're doing demolition for the, uh, parking garage because that is kind of right there. Uh, and so you're taking part of that sidewalk space away. So that's going to be the only real conflict that we're going to be having, it looks to me. So just, just a heads up to you.
I, I, I agree, Mike.
And before we get to you, Melissa, I see Alderman Callahan has his hand up.
I just have a question regarding what, uh, James was saying and a little bit referring to what Mike was saying about. Is there any, uh, TIF reimbursable expenses for the surrounding businesses for any of the business interruptions? Or, uh, just as was stated, who would pay for the signs? Those would be, uh, we wouldn't want those necessary expenses being burdened by the businesses that are a result, direct result of maybe some of the construction. Are any of those covered under the TIF?
You know, we have to be careful, uh, because the TIF Act is very specific about what TIF funds can be used to pay for, which is why when we do our grant programs, they are things for, uh, signage, facade, uh, landscaping, hardscaping. And so I can look into what, uh, the restrictions might be there. But certainly we could also, um, look to the general fund if there were funds that we wanted to designate as grants to businesses. The general fund, uh, monies would not be restricted in that manner.
Well, Alderman, I, I know that advertising and marketing is a line item in the, uh, in the TIF Act. Uh, I would just have somebody check of marketing and advertising of what, uh, in the, in the TIF district, uh, before the dollars are spent.
You're right. And that's what I wanted to see if that qualified as it was brought up, uh, potentially signs on the corners. Does that qualify? Because there's no reason Rich should incur those costs because they're extraordinary costs that he's having to possibly incur through no fault of his own. And if there's any other options for any other surrounding businesses for any expenses that they may incur and we may deal with that later.
Yes.
Yeah, Laura, I would have to agree with Marty on that. I think it would be, you know, up to the city and the developer to, to foot those bills for whatever, you know, signage there is. I don't think that should be anything put onto any of the, the businesses. I agree with Marty.
All right. Um, with that then, we'll turn to you, Melissa. Thank you for being patient.
No, no worries. Can you hear me? I, I think I muted. Okay, cool. Um, and bear with me. I had a lot of points that some have been addressed, so I'm kind of gonna do my best here. Um, to anyone attending that doesn't know me, um, my name is Melissa Mano. I'm the owner-operator of The River's Edge, transitioning into the Sidecar Supper Club and Beer Garden this year. Um, in five years, we've embedded ourselves in the community and have provided everything I promised since presenting, um, to the council, my ideas to be granted a liquor license in 2015. We've cleaned up, restored vintage appeal, provide home-cooked, locally sourced food, drinks, more light local music than anywhere in town in a fun, safe environment for neighbors and visitors to Batavia. Um, I'm here because the future of this feels like it's on the line. I'm not confident that my little business is going to survive. Um, because I haven't really been confident in the back and forth answers and the communication that we've had thus far. As COVID winter continues, it's now no longer feasible to keep my doors open. This is going to be our last week of business for a while. Um, so many factors have changed with this project over the course of several years to the point where I remember initially there was no access to River Street. And we've seen apartment numbers go up and the spaces go down and, uh, I, I'm so sorry, I'm scrolling. Uh, retail, no retail, like all the rolling and swirling. I don't feel like anyone's ever come to the businesses with reassurance of exactly how we're going to make it. Um, over time and just recently, I, I asked some important questions and some still remain unanswered. What's the project timeline? What are the hours of construction to be allowed? Uh, in a project of this scale, how often might utilities like electricity and water be affected? Is there compensation for lost business considered? There actually was an answer to that and it was a definitive no. Um, how much time do you consider quote reasonable for letting us know such things? For me, I schedule events months in advance. Um, is there going to be a definitive, do we lose farmer's market? Are we going to have all of our events on the wood nerf? Is this RDA going to be updated now? Uh, I most recently received an email and it said it was impossible without closing River Street. And so has this changed or can it change again? Up until now, I've just heard about things. We haven't been considered or informed on any of the processes to get to these answers. Why, can I get information from like the police department, um, on places like Nextdoor and Facebook and a lot of times firsthand? When I don't see anything about important city agenda items until the day of, if ever. Or sometimes just getting an email from Batavians for responsible government. Um, Laura, you suggested I sign up for the email for city updates. This meeting, I feel like it was important, but it wasn't on the last email. So I asked, what's the city really have concrete implants for options to support the businesses that are going to be affected by a massive construction project? We're all holding on by the skin of our teeth and with the pandemic shutdowns, those of us playing by the rules were suffering really, really hard. Um, I want to hear more than the developer is going to put a sign up with our logo on it around the fence and try to liken that construction can be sold as a tourist attraction. As for 12 North River Street where we're at, um, it's going to, it's about to be swallowed by this thing. What, no one talked to us in four years. I remember drastic requirements to our space were never agreed to. And there was a really imminent threat from the developer about the usage of our space in the future. What I'm hearing now is that, um, or I'm sorry, um, I asked everyone who voted yes in the last vote, why, um, that was their stance and I thank you. Alderman Wolf, Serone, Beck and Baron for outlining your thoughts for me. And though I and quite a few people, if I have an idea of notes you've all been receiving, don't agree with that position, the project itself nor the extension of the TIF that would allow for it, I appreciate your efforts to respond to my concerns. Voting no to the TIF, it allows time to consider other options that would be good for our town's aesthetic and economic vitality. It doesn't mean that the land can't be developed on a similar, smaller scale, uh, under the current TIF and possibly even working with Shodin. Uh, since the inception of this project, more spaces for residential buildings have become available downtown. As I love this town and everything that makes it this town, first and foremost, my neighbors. The people you all represent, east side, west side, the art, the music, the riverwalk, the boardwalk shops. That project generated so much revenue and tourism and it brought new permanent businesses to town. Growth's happening organically. The, the shops launched so quickly because the city was so excited about it. Are, are you excited about One North Washington or, or were there vibes of desperation going on for a while? I, I heard your voices in other meetings, like fearful that if we don't move forward this project, there'll be no further development at this location. Fear and desperation, I just, how can that drive positive growth for our community? And what kind of legacy is that to leave for future generation? So, uh, is this redevelopment agreement going to be altered? Or do we have to believe in quote, good faith and reasonable effort that's currently outlined in it? I, I had good faith that my concerns would be addressed long before this point, but they haven't. Um, so I just, I didn't think I could stand by anymore and needed more answers. Thank you.
Laura, would you like me to comment on some of those or?
Sure. Go ahead.
So Melissa, uh, to start off, it sounds like you, you have a, a lot of, of questions. Um, uh, I tried to capture some of those, uh, as far as the water main and Gary Holm, uh, Public Works Director could, uh, jump in here if need be. Uh, I believe, and Gary can correct me, that I, I do not believe that we need to shut your water off when we connect into the, uh, into the water main. But we may need to check the valving, uh, in the street to confirm that that would, that's not needed. If, if that is necessary, we obviously through the city, they would be, uh, providing sufficient notices to who needs to be shut off and for, and for what period of time. But my recollection or understanding is no, you would not need your water shut off. I believe it's the same for the electricity, that the, your electricity would not need to be shut off when our electricity is, uh, is connected. But perhaps Gary can step into, uh, and answer those, those two items also. Uh, as far as being, uh, being a neighbor, uh, I agree with you. We're, we're a neighbor of yours, uh, as much as, uh, you know, vice, vice versa. Um, there have been a couple of meetings, uh, in our office with your property owners. Um, and you, you were not present at those meetings. Just as much as I think it's important that I attend a meeting with all of the businesses and everybody sits face-to-face. I think it's important for you to be present, uh, with the owners of your property, um, when, when I'm meeting, uh, when I'm meeting with them. Um, there's going to be a lot more that, uh, needs to be, uh, needs to be discussed than many of the items you addressed since I, I, I believe and have believed for a long period of time that, uh, your backyard, your beer garden should be, um, considered for, uh, re- redevelopment, uh, or rework before we complete all of our work. Because once we're done, it's going to then make it more difficult and more costly for your property owners to get back into their backyard. I, we are willing to work with them to whatever improvements they want to make or need to make can be coordinated with the improvements that we're doing and we would give construction access, uh, you know, through, uh, through our project, uh, to get whatever work needs to be done, uh, in, in your backyard. So, um, once we know that this, the project is going to move forward, I would encourage, uh, a sit-down of yourself, your property owners and, and ourselves. Uh, we can include the city, uh, if they would like, probably wouldn't hurt to have somebody from the city there to discuss what exactly, uh, you, uh, wants to be or should be or needs to be done, uh, on, on the backside of, of your property. Um, as far as the RDA, uh, I don't believe that there's any revisions other than the paragraph that Alderman Serone was mentioning where some, uh, some few words or sentences need to be clarified or modified regarding access along, uh, along River Lane. Uh, but tho- those are very, I would consider that to be very minor, uh, if there's any, uh, revisions at all that are needed, uh, to the RDA. Many of, uh, it's, it sounds like perhaps many of your comments or questions are maybe out of frustration and not having open, fluid communication. Um, and I'm willing to open that back up and, uh, have communication directly with you and your property owners and try to clarify or correct or modify or whatever it needs to be done with, uh, with your concerns. I believe that not only our construction personnel, but our longtime residents are going to be using your business uh, and be, and be bringing you, uh, business and that's not an advertisement. Uh, I, 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 I know it's going to happen. They're, they're going, uh, they're going to be there. Um, it, it's, we saw it as recently as in Oswego and I, the, the, uh, everything from the, the brew pub to the village, the Oswego Inn to the Tap House, all surrounding the, the project. They've all commented about how they've gotten business from the construction traffic uh, that is, uh, that, that, that's at the building. Um, so I, I offer that to you and hopefully I touched on a few of your comments, but I, I think it would be better to have, uh, you know, sit down face-to-face and have those, uh, have those discussions directly with each other.
So I also wanted to address Melissa, um, concerning not knowing about what is going to be talked about at upcoming meetings. On the city's website, we have a city calendar and the city calendar shows exactly when all the meetings are going to be held. And then on the Friday prior to, uh, on the Friday prior, we post all of the agendas and not only post all the agendas with the topics, but we also attach the documents that are going to be discussed at that meeting as well. So that if there are any, um, uh, topics of, that are of interest to you or you would like to participate in the discussion as you have today, feel free to, there's always, if we are online, there's information about how to register for that meeting and, um, be able to participate in those discussions.
Thanks for pointing that out, Laura. Uh, perhaps just because of the holidays, things are harder to find.
It is. And, you know, I apologize if for many of your questions, I had either, there wasn't information to provide you. So for instance, there is no construction schedule at this point and there won't be one unless we establish the TIF. And so we don't know, um, what, what that is to be, but I tried to kind of give a vague, you know, as good of an outline as I knew that it's going to take Dave probably the next three months to, um, complete the construction drawings. Um, and then it will take probably, I'm going to guess about two months for the city staff to look through that, you know, a four-inch stack of documents that will be provided in order to turn around a building permit to him. But that doesn't necessarily account for if there's going to be back and forth between us about questions about those drawings. And so it just makes it really hard to say, you know, August 1st is when we're going to put a shovel in the ground. But as I also said, I want to start talking to the business community on a very regular basis, six months before construction is going to start so that you guys, uh, know that construction is coming. And then also working with the Chamber of Commerce and Main Street, there are things that we can, um, provide as advice for businesses about maybe things that they want to think about, uh, now, uh, that are plans that can be put in place when construction does finally arrive. So expect for those, that that communication to increase. And I'm, I'm sorry if you have found it deficient so far. I know that we can do a better job.
Thank you. Six months or more. Sounds wonderful. I remember I asked about like, not that I can make you make spring happen any sooner, but what's the earliest we can get tables out there? Cause we're all just, we're waiting for that day, just to make it through.
Right. I hear you.
I'm going to mute myself.
Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, I just want to kind of point out in the spirit of being a good neighbor, some of these meetings can be held at River's Edge. She makes fantastic food there. And I know how busy she works her tail off. So maybe her inability to get up to your place, drive down here and visit your neighbor, the food is phenomenal.
Hey Laura?
Oh, yes.
Second. So Laura, you know, all these meetings should be held somewhere around River Street or at City Council, at City Hall, correct?
Mike, one of the things that we found was when we were doing meetings on River Street that get very good attendance at all. And I think it's because people found it hard to drag themselves away. And so as I was saying in my memo, I think perhaps this format is going to be the most convenient format for people to, all they have to do is have their phone in their hand, no matter where they are, and they're going to be able to participate in the meeting. It also provides us with the opportunity to be able to record the meeting. So if people aren't available when the meeting's happening, they can, we can post it someplace where they can listen to the recorded meeting if they prefer. We've also had very good luck with our engineering department. We've got good feedback about the Area 3, Main Street, Prairie Street construction projects, where on a weekly basis, a very detailed explanation of what had been accomplished over this past week and what was coming up next week was provided to those who had signed up for an email list as well. People seem to really appreciate that type of communication too. The two-way communication face to face, whether it's a 2D face or a 3D face, is really important. The ability to ask questions in real time and get answers to those questions in real time. Melissa, what do you think about the idea of hosting the meetings online like this? Or is it better if it's, everybody walks to someplace in person?
I always think in person is better.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay.
Melissa, you know, just, when construction does start, you're going to have 60 to 100 workers looking for lunch and looking for beer after work. And that's, you know, if you can make yourself available for that.
I'll have my skates on.
Well, only I just, I see it, I know it. So I think you can do well.
We have one other member of the public with his hand up. If I could ask Michael Bonin, if you'd like to speak, I will unmute your microphone. There you go. Michael? We are not able to hear you, Michael. I'm just going to take one last run through and see if I can find anyone else. Laura O'Brien, I will unmute your microphone. There you go, Laura.
Hi, hi, everybody. I just wanted to make it known that I was on the call and I wanted to just quickly address what Dave had to say, you know, in regards to communication. And, you know, the project did start several years ago. I was going to look it up. I didn't get a chance to, but at least three, not four. And we did have, and Melissa is fully aware of the communication, Dave, that we had at your office. So there was no secrets or anything along those lines. She was fully aware. But Dave, if you recall, we had a plan and we were waiting for you. And we left off with an email directly to you asking, are you going to do this or not? We need to move forward with our plan. You have never responded to me to this day. So right now, I'm kind of finding out that you're moving forward. Unfortunately, this has been a year of loss for me. And so I've been a little bit behind this year. And so I just want to make it known that I do want to have a meeting, but we've already completed our project. Our building is finished. We are moving from District 1 to District 6. So anything we need to do with the grading for you, we can take out District 6 as. That's all I have to say. We can take it offline from there.
Okay. We also have Casey Hoag. Go ahead, Casey. Casey, you are self-muted.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry. Sorry, I was unmuted really quick. I apologize. Just really quick, I guess, just to piggyback, most of you obviously know where I stand and how I feel. I've communicated that with everyone. But just to piggyback on what Melissa said, 100%, obviously, I can't even imagine. But I guess one thing to look at is that, you know, we talk about construction workers eating and dining at the restaurants. I sell women's clothing. And when I look at this map, the parking, everything for me is gone. So we talk about Saturday traffic, which is fantastic, but I'm open six days a week, mostly seven. All of my parallel parking is gone. My side lot parking is gone. I had the boardwalks across the street, but obviously we use that for the boardwalk, which I'm thrilled with, but that minimizes that. And then foot traffic for me, sidewalks, things of that nature. I just, you know, 60% of my business comes from people who come into my storefront. Women like to try clothes on. And yes, I can sell online. There's no doubt I can sell online. That won't carry me through a two, potentially three-year project, whatever the timeframe may be. So I guess when I say look at all the businesses before you place the vote on the TIF and what you decide to do. River Street being open is very important to me. It's important to my neighbors. But again, when people, when there's major massive construction and when we're all hanging on, like Melissa said, we're literally hanging on. People avoid construction projects like the plague. When you drive, tell me you don't try to avoid a construction project. You do. You go around, you try to go the other way, you avoid it. This isn't going to bring us any traffic besides the construction workers, which God, I'm thankful, I'm so thankful if that helps out, Melissa. I would be overjoyed. But this, I just, it's really disheartening. It's really disheartening for me, especially seeing the map. I mean, River Street being open, the parking, I guess that I just, this, I'm hanging on and I'm really afraid of what this would do to me long term. I have every intention, and somebody asked me this question, and I think a lot of the comments go to Batavia has seen a lot of businesses flip over time. There's no doubt about that. But we really do have sustainable businesses currently in your downtown. And I'm one of them. I mean, on any given year, I'm very proud of the revenue that I generate. I'm very proud of my business. This year brought us referrals and a long-term project will 100% make me have to reevaluate everything and where I house my retail location. And that very much saddens me because Batavia, I sought Batavia. I chose Batavia over any other city in the Fox Valley. Like I told you guys all, when everybody else thought I was crazy and thought I should open up a women's boutique everywhere else, just like in Geneva, St. Charles, I said, no, you're wrong. You're wrong. Batavia needs something like this. I chose Batavia. And right now, when I look at this, I mean, I can have all the online orders in the world, but bottom line is, for my business personally, women try and close, women like to come in with women. It's an experience. And when I can offer that experience is when I do my best. And that experience will be taken away from me for quite some time. So that's really just all I have to say.
Tried to give Michael Bonin an opportunity to speak again. Attendee, let's see.
Are you able to hear me now?
Yes.
Praise the Lord. I fixed it. Yay.
Yay.
First, thank you very much. This has been very enlightening, listening to everybody here for the past, you know, hour or so talk about this. My family and I relocated to Illinois from California, August 2019. Did quite a bit of soul searching, you know, through the Geneva-St. Charles area and really fell in love with Batavia. One of the first places I actually sat down and had something to eat and a drink was at the River's Edge. Being there, they had a bluegrass night, just looking at that downtown area is something that was special that we couldn't get in California. It's something that keeps Batavia special. Looking at the fence line, somebody did an artist rendition of what it's going to look like for the construction project. I don't know if that's really going to be it or not, but wow, what an isolation. It really takes away from the beautiful history that you all have. And to lose that would be very disheartening, especially for us being a new family here and falling in love with that and getting ready to buy a home here. We have to take that into account. Coming from California and seeing how construction can impact a small community, it's huge. And, you know, as you put it, construction workers are going to maybe flock to them. Where am I going to flock to when I want to go to the normal places that I like to eat? El Taco Grand, you know, River's Edge, Revolution. I mean, it's going to be very congested. We all saw what happened to Wilson Street with the Fabian Bridge. If a little bridge can do that, what do you think massive construction, and it is massive, will do to impact that area? You know, people in the community, they're going to go somewhere else. I don't know also who this is geared towards living, if it's small families, singles, elderly. If it's for small families, what's going to happen to places like Louise White, which we love? Our daughter goes there. Is it going to overcrowd Louise White with all these new families moving in or not? I don't know. To echo something Melissa said, I found out about this project just a couple of months ago. I live over off of Columbia Street, so I'm a stone's throw from downtown. I didn't know anything about this. Isn't this something that should be more put out there for the public to find and not just being referred to a website? Maybe a little mailer or something? I know I get plenty of other mail from Batavia. Why not something thrown in there about that, more public meetings? Because this does impact me, even though I don't have a business, but I live here. This is our home. This is where we want to make it our forever home. And unfortunately, I'll leave it at this, putting that right there in the downtown area does not want to make me call this home. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Let's see, we've got more. Denise Espinoza, I just need to unmute her microphone. Go ahead, Denise.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Laura. Thank you, everyone. Hello for organizing this and all the opinions. My yoga studio, so we are the owners of Soma Yoga Studio. We are right above 6+ Cypress and recently just relocated to that space. We also love Batavia, just like everyone else, and the vibe, the community. We know that eventually this will be a beneficial increase in hopefully population and sales. So we see that long term. Short term, though, I have some questions and maybe they were addressed, so I apologize if they were. But the parking, I know Casey brought that up, short-term parking issues, long-term parking issues. So the long term, I know there'll be 333 spots or something to that effect. Is that open to the public and free to everyone or just to the residents of that building? And also the hours of construction. So we're a yoga studio. Construction and peace, calm and zen, it's completely the opposite. Those are the two opposite spectrums. So I know this will affect my classes to some extent. So what can I expect from a perspective of hours of operation, including Saturday and Sunday? Thank you.
Denise, I can address some of those issues for you. First, with regard to construction that is governed by our city ordinances. And I'm going to rely on Scott Buning for some backup here and/or Gary, who might remember the hours better than I can, but I think it's no earlier than 7:30 a.m. And I am not sure what the cutoff is for the evening.
Yeah, Laura, the hours are Monday through Saturday, 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., meaning no equipment or anything can start up before that or after that. And then on Sundays, it's 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Which is sure not what you were hoping to hear, Denise, and I'm sorry about that. With regard to the parking, though, very early on in this project, we wanted to make sure that we offered replacement parking for what was going to be under construction. And that is the public parking deck and the parking lot that you see kind of on the north side of Dave's map that is up there. And so the city purchased properties that were formerly Larson &amp; Becker and paid $1.75 million for those properties and then created a surface parking lot with 110 public parking spaces. And the intent is to keep that not only during the entire period of construction, but also to keep it for a little bit, a little while afterwards too. Because this 331 space parking garage, two levels, that is going to be at the base of the One Washington Place project is all public parking. The apartments that will be located there will have to get an overnight parking permit from the city, which is allowed throughout the downtown mixed-use district. And that will allow them then to park their cars in the parking deck overnight. But the city did a parking study and that can be found on the One Washington Place webpage on our website, which took a look at the shared use of parking spaces. And that should result in a net gain of public parking in this area. But because we want to make sure that that's true, we committed to keeping the Larson &amp; Becker, the former Larson &amp; Becker properties, public parking asset until such time as we determine that it is not needed for the downtown businesses. So while it is not as close as the public parking deck is now, it is just across State Street, across on the other side of the walking bridge, a big parking lot located right there. I'm looking to see if, I thought I saw another hand go up. Just look. Yes, we have Joanne Gustafson. I am, okay, I unmuted you, but you are on self-mute from your computer. So you just need to, there you go. Joanne? Your microphone looks like it's activated. I just can't hear you. Maybe are there any other comments from City Council relevant to the discussion? Alderman Knop? And then we'll come back to you, Joanne.
Abby had her hand up before me. Please go to Alderman Beck.
Alderman Beck?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to follow up on something that Melissa had said and David responded to. And thank you, Laura, for being on here as well. When you were talking about the backyard area to River's Edge, are you saying that there are requirements that the O'Briens and Melissa must do to their backyard? Are the things that they have to reconstruct? Or are you saying just in case there were reconstruction needs that, you know, to coordinate the time with your construction project?
Nothing is required. I'll say many years ago, there was discussion about whether they wanted to regrade or make changes in their backyard or to the beer garden in the back. If you know their property, rather, if you know it well, that their access along the north side of the building is a little difficult to get, that they were going to excavate or do anything in the back. And the ideal time would be either during our construction or with our construction. And so that was, we were offering to coordinate with them. But there's nothing that we are requiring of them to do.
Thank you. And the other question I had about closures to River Street or closures to any street, as it says, have to Um, or closures to any street, as it says, have to go for city approval. What is the approval process for getting temporary closures?
It's a fairly informal process with the Community Development Department. Um, and it's just an application that is, uh, completed for the road closure. And reviewed to make sure that the, um, it's safe. Um, it's reviewed with the Streets Department, with the Police Departments. Um, Scott, is there anything else that you want to say about it?
Uh, yeah, and if there's, uh, you know, any detours for sidewalks, uh, that type of thing, uh, those are all included as part of whatever the approval is for the actual street closure.
Yes.
And so anything that was going to be closed above and beyond what we've talked about, you know, those. Those random times, the crazy moments that River Street would have to be closed. Um, it's just making a, making a reasonable request and that will be granted? Or, you know, what's, what's your threshold as, as staff to what's going to close Down River Street?
Well, at this point, um, what I heard from the developer is that we can't foresee the circumstance. Where River Street would need to be closed, but, um, you know, I, I don't know if some catastrophe happens. And, uh, some utility, uh, is damaged or needs to be repaired. That exists underneath, uh, that section of North River Street. I could foresee that the city would need to close that down and get in there and fix those utilities. But it's not going to be, you know, it's more convenient for us to park a truckload of bricks perpendicular. In the road and block off access to all of the businesses on North River Street. That the city's going to say, sure, here's your permit. You know, as, as Dave said, the, the truck may need to pull up parallel. When it's delivering the bricks that are necessary to reskin that corner. Um, but that it's going to be limited to. The minimal disruption necessary to accomplish that work.
And I just want to say to Melissa and Casey and into the business and James and the business community out there. Um, you know, that's, that's definitely not the vibe that's out in the community, you know, or that was definitely not the, um. There was no reassurance of any of this prior to this evening's meeting about. The, the fate of River Street, the fate of events, the fate of closing it down for public access. Closing it down for public access, not closing it down for construction. Um. And so the confusion out there and, and the lack of communication, I can, I can understand it because I feel it too. Where I, I don't always feel like I'm completely in the know and I'm reading all the documents and sitting here every week. Um, the Batavians, Batavians for the responsible government have kind of controlled the narrative on this one a lot. And, and that's, and agree with them or not, they've done, they've done a pretty good job at, at rallying some troops. So I just, I just wanted to drill, drill in the communication piece even farther about moving forward. Immediately, as soon as this is inked, that those communications start and they, they start right away.
Alderman Knapp?
Thank you. Laura, you mentioned, um, a parking study that was done some years ago. Um, and, and using that to, to kind of direct purchase of the Larson Becker property. As a semi-temporary during construction of all this. But during the last nine months, we've seen a change in employment habits. Where more people aren't going to work, they're staying home to work. What effect would that have on any parking study and the availability of daytime parking spaces? Within this parking structure that might change some of that mathematics?
I, given the fact that we are still in the midst of the pandemic. I don't think that the modeling, uh, parking analyst, I'm sorry, yeah, the parking analysts do. Have clearly caught up to that, which is why we are keeping the Larson Becker parking lot as a safety belt. Yeah, we feel that the Larson Becker parking lot, one hundred and ten additional spaces. Beyond the three hundred and thirty-one spaces that we already have. So four hundred and forty-one spaces is a lot more than the ninety that exist today. Even with adding, uh, two hundred residences.
I just want to follow up on that. I don't want to interrupt you, Joe, but, um, that was kind of a, a line of thought I had too, that, that. A, a parking garage, a sixteen million dollar parking garage in twenty twenty-one is probably. Not as good of investment as it was even a couple of years ago. And this is coming from someone who doesn't think parking garages are a good investment anyway, but a worse investment now. Um, and that what, what I'm afraid of happening is that if everybody rents these apartments, they all have two cars, they fill up that lot. It's essentially a private lot that we are funding. Then the need for Larson Becker to remain a parking lot on riverfront property along our most beautiful street in town. We will never be able to undo that parking lot. We will never develop our riverfront because parking will be, will remain. The sacred cow that we cannot kill and, um, that would be, that would. I mean, it's not good, it's not a good look for our town to have a massive parking lot on riverfront. But how do we, how do we get rid of that if we don't have any other public parking on that street?
So two things there. Um, that is one of the reasons why we built the garage without a ramp. Uh, garages with ramps have little, uh, ability to be. So if they end up being too much, then there's nothing else to do with them. This parking deck is two separate floors. And so feasibly, something else could be done with one of those floors if both are not needed. Um, so that, you know, that, that kind of allows us a little bit of, uh, flexibility in that direction.
But I don't think that's going to be the need. I think that everybody's going to rent those apartments, have cars, work from home and never. Never leave, never move their car. So it's never going to be open, to Joe's point. It's never going to be open during the day for shoppers at Cypress or yoga attendees or, um, people eating at restaurants.
Laura, if I may jump in, I, I think one of the things that we thought about was, was again, the, the Larson Becker being the backstop. Because of the fact that we were taking a unique approach to this building. Uh, was to try and see where, how is parking going to end up once this project is done? Um, and if, you know, back then, the idea was that, you know, hopefully it's, we'd be able to have this whole shared parking model. Which would then reduce the amount of parking that we'd really need to have, especially parking that wouldn't be used for most of the day. Um, so, you know, we wanted to keep the Larson Becker basically as our experiment to see where things go. If long term, we find out we're still going to need parking. I wouldn't anticipate that Larson Becker is going to be the long-term parking lot. I would see them probably end up moving that parking somewhere else. Uh, you know, incorporated partially into other buildings. Maybe some of that would be incorporated into a riverside building of sorts. Um, you know, we'd maybe see it more spread out in that fashion. So I wouldn't see that Larson Becker lot is going to be there forever. That's, that is a temporary situation.
Yes, that's a good point, Scott, that likely the, um, parking up under. As here, we wanted to put revenue-producing on top of what is a zero-revenue proposition, uh, public parking. Um, the other thing I wanted to address was that it was mentioned that each one of the apartments will likely have two cars. And Dave Patzout, maybe you could address what your experience is at your other properties with similar luxury apartments?
Uh, we, again, remember that we are, uh, studios, one-bedroom and two-bedroom apartments, so we're not, uh, three-bedroom apartments. Uh, we average between one point, uh, one to. One point one up to the highest of a one point two-five cars per apartment. And, uh, identical scenarios throughout, um, throughout the Geneva-St. Charles area. So I, I don't see any reason why to be over one point two-five vehicles per apartment.
Laura, if I could?
Alan?
Just kind of a, a simple response to, to Abby's comment about the. Amount of what I'll call propaganda we've seen from certain groups and certain, uh, emails that we've gotten. Um, I, I think if I was to look at the percentages of the no's that I've seen that have come in on emails. It would just about match the no's that I saw for, uh, us retaining home rule. And the no's that I saw for whether or not we should allow marijuana sales in Batavia. When they went to the public and the actual public spoke, not just the loudest people that can type emails out to us. Um, it was overwhelming the other way. So, you know, I, I think history shows that there's a lot of people in this town. That want to see things happen. They don't speak up a lot about it. They don't get involved a lot. But when it comes to voting for those things, it happens. The libraries won, the bridge referendum is another, the, uh, school additions, the field, the turf. A lot of things that have happened in this town ha- have happened with a lot of support that doesn't get a lot of press. And, you know, I, I got quite a few emails and some personal contact about this when it came back up again. To re-TIF the, the district and to move this project forward. And the, the development, and I think the biggest thing that's been a hindrance, and this goes citywide, doesn't matter what project it's about. Or what district or what school project or park district or anything else. Communications has always been the key, whether it's to convince people to vote for something or against something on a referendum. Or whether it's, you know, having a project like this move forward. The communications has always been the key. I mean, the piss, the pictures that I saw and were shared with me over the last weekend. Were the first yellow blocks of cheese again, shown by our favorite group in town that decides that when they don't like something. They're going to muscle up all the people they can to write emails to everybody on the city council, not to do something that they don't like. Um, and every time, that group's been on the wrong side of it. So, you know, it, take that for whatever you want to take it for. I have believed from the start on this that us building a project like this. Is one of the best things we can do for our downtown. Now granted, I think we're paying a lot too much per face for a parking garage, but that was our decision. That was the city council's decision from the start on this. So many of you were not here at the beginning of this. We demanded from the developer, we wanted a parking garage. We wanted a big parking garage. And it had to be a component of this. That's why that building has to be so big, is to be able to afford to make. The money in the tax increment district to be able to pay for that. The city of Batavia doesn't have ten or twelve or fifteen million dollars to spend on a parking garage. The reality is, without a project of that size, we don't build a parking garage. Um, yes, we have enough money to go out and put blacktop down over a piece of property we buy. But that's the reality of, that's how we would make parking in town if the city had to come up with the funds for it. I guarantee you, if we went to the citizens under a referendum and said. Hey, would you like to put fifteen million dollars into our general fund so we can build a parking garage downtown? It would never happen. Um, the reality is. If we want to see things happen in downtown, if we want successful businesses, if we want people downtown. Walking downtown in what we've done with streetscapes. We have to bring people to the downtown. And it's not just because we have a farmer's market down there on Saturdays. If you want day in and day out businesses to survive, whether they be restaurants, retail, um, offices, different businesses, service businesses, whatever it is. You have to bring people down there. And if we don't focus on that and we don't do this. And I'm not saying this is the last resort on this project, but if we don't do this. And make a project happen, if it's taken us four or five years to get to this point. If I'm a developer looking at a place in the Fox Valley, do I want to wait that long for my return on investment? Do I want to wait and put myself through that hell to get to that point? I doubt it. So the reality is, if we don't make one happen, how do we make the next one happen? How to make the one after that happen? You know, if you want to entice developers into town, you get a project done, you make it a success, and you watch the growth happen around it. And to me, this is something that we've drug out so long with so many little. Things compounded by a lot of big things. And most of them are on the city. They're not on the developer. Um, you know, I don't have any personal tie to the developer. I don't have anything against any of the developers we've ever dealt with. But this developer has stuck with us through this whole process and still wants to build this. You know, to me, if they're going to invest that kind of money into this project. They obviously think what they're going to produce at the end of it is going to be a saleable product, or they wouldn't be doing this. They wouldn't be running into a brick wall for four years to try to get this done. If they didn't think they could rent out every one of those units and make money off this. That's the reality, and that's what I think people keep forgetting about. Everybody wants to complain about the size of it or the color of it or the design of it. The reality is, if we don't bring people into our downtown in a living arrangement, we will not. Expand our downtown at all. And that really is what bothers me. I've watched this downtown from the time I moved here in nineteen seventy-two till today. And we are really doing good things. The last ten years, we have really made some things happen. And I don't want to lose that momentum. I mean, in the middle of a pandemic. We brought new businesses into town. They were extremely successful throughout a pandemic. And they're moving into brick and mortar buildings in town. And I want to bring the people downtown to make them successful into the future. I want them to flourish. I don't want them to just, you know, survive. I want to see them, you know, expand. I want to see them grow into their own special area in this town. That really means something, is something that twenty-five years from now, I can come back here and say, yeah, I was part of that, and I'm pretty damn proud of it. Thank you.
Hey, Laura.
Yes?
So to Alan's point, you know, I, I just want to, again, repeat. This, this project, it's a large project, it's not going to cost the city anything. Okay? I mean, the, the TIF is going to pay for it. And so at the end of the TIF, we're going to have a windfall of, of, of increment of, 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 up to a million dollars. All of the taxing bodies to share. I, I, you know, and, and while it's getting to that sunset time, twenty-three years from now. There's going to be people living in this building that are going to be shopping in our downtown and adding to our retail tax revenues. And it's going to bring retail to our downtown. And, and, and another to Alan's point about, and I'm not onto social media all that much. But these people who, whatever they are, responsible government people, I don't know who they are. We've been dealing with these people, the same type of people since I've been on the council. And, and these people with their, their misinformation and half-truths. Throughout everything, everything like Alan says that they're opposed to, they just start lining up people who don't know what they're signing. And they start saying, this is what's wrong. And there are all these misinformation and half-truths. We missed the dam being taken out that would have been taken out by the state, which is going to cost us money. We, we missed the bridge that was going to be paid by the federal government and the state. Now we have to pay for a second bridge. We didn't get that because of all of these people. And these responsible government people who just don't want anything to raise their taxes. So we're for the last four, five years, six years, fighting to get this project done. So we don't have to raise their taxes. This is where we're going to get our revenue from. And all these discussions that we have at, at tax time, when we're doing the budget. You know, we're always, well, we don't want to raise taxes on people, and we don't. We, we worked real hard for the last three years, we have not raised our taxes on, on, on property taxes. So what do we do? We have to find alternate sources of revenue. This is it. This is going to be doing it. And these people on social media who have their half-truths, I wish they would just shut up because I'm tired of it. And it's just, it's just ill-founded and it's only, and it's self-serving for them.
Hey, Laura.
Point of order. Mr. Mayor, point of order.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
As chairman who is running this section, I got to remind. As chairman who is running this section, I got to remind council, this is only about the discussion for the parking concerns that the businesses brought up. The item that is going to be discussed related to the TIF are the items that are coming up after this, and this was the public discussion of that. I don't want us to get sidetracked. It is already 10:20 tonight on items that are not related to this issue.
Well, thank you. This is a kind of a mixed bag here. I mean, as you and I both know, this kind of, one involves the other in some degree, and we have to, pretty hard to separate them. But I, I agree, we probably should focus back on, on concluding this discussion and getting, getting on with the ordinances beginning with 13. So, does Laura, do we still have some people wanting to talk?
I believe we have. I'd like to offer Joanne Gustafson, your microphone is green. It looks like it's on if you still wanted to make a comment. Okay, unfortunately, she does not seem to be able to make her comments. Tony Malay, you had raised your hand a while back. Do you still have a comment that you would like to make? Oh, you're muted. Tony, you have to turn on your microphone.
Sorry about that. Yeah, I just wanted to, was going to respond to Alan, but, but Marty, I appreciate Mike. It's more directed at the next ordinance that we discuss.
Okay, and Sylvia Keppel has her hand raised. And, okay, let's see if I can, and Sylvia, you're self-muted.
Hi there. I have more to say in the next section. I was holding my comments for then, but I just want to address the alderman who spoke just now. To the aldermen who say it will cost taxpayers nothing. If that is true, why did the school district vote against the TIF? Why? Because it will cost. It will cost the school district from their estimation, from all of their calculations. And Tony Anglis is a, is pretty sharp. He says it will cost, which is why they voted against the TIF district. And when it costs them, it costs us. You are taking money away from the school district with this TIF. And they will have to recoup the cost. They will have to cover the students at no, without the, without the benefit of the taxes that they should be getting. The taxes that we all pay into the school district, they will not be getting from Shodine for 23 years at least. So, it's about time you stop saying that it will cost taxpayers nothing. I am not stupid. The people of Batavia are not stupid. They could read the information themselves that you failed to put out there. You could put the information out there if you want to. If my information is misinformation, you correct it. I want to see where I am wrong. You show me where I am wrong. You show the people of Batavia where I am wrong. You can't do it. So, quit picking on me for showing, giving out misinformation because it is not. It is true information that your communication coordinator should be putting out there instead of me. Maybe I should be getting paid instead of the communication coordinator. And Alderman Wolf, you said yourself that a referendum on a 15 million dollar parking garage would never pass. Yet you say all the people who wrote you against it are misguided and don't represent the majority. Which is it? Do they not represent the majority? Or do they represent the majority? If they represent, if they don't represent the majority, why would you say that, that it would never pass if you were to put a 15 million dollar referendum out there? I beg to differ. People are smarter than you put them out to be. They're not sitting on the city council, but they are smart people from all different walks of life that can evaluate what is out there and form their own opinions. And you, sitting there on the council, are not some, are not gifted with some special ability that makes you above everybody else. So, I will, I will go on with the rest of my comments in the next section. Thank you.
So, one statistic I would like to point out is that if the, the current TIF 5 generates about $7,000 in property taxes each year. And so, over the course of the next, say, 20 years, the school district would be getting about $5,000 of that. So, it would generate about $100,000 for the school district in tax revenue. Whereas with this project expecting to generate more than $1 million in incremental revenue, the school's share of that would be $700,000, and that's per year. Are there any other?
Do you have any other people waving this?
I, Laura O'Brien's hand is up, but I think it was just remaining up from before, and James Joseph has already spoken as well. So, now, I think that, that is the end of the comments.
Marty, you okay, okay with ending this discussion then at this moment?
Yes, Laura, there's no action on this item yet.
No.
It's just the discussion based on the concerns that were approached by the business owners on this for the topic, for the next remaining items.
Yeah, next one we go to is item number 13, which is ordinance 2101, an ordinance dissolving tax increment district number six, known as the Washington Wilson Redevelopment District.
I'm sorry, that's actually dissolving TIF number five.
Five?
Yes.
Somebody wrote the wrong number here on my agenda.
I think I know her.
All right. Stating that again, ordinance number, or item number 13, which is ordinance 21-01, an ordinance dissolving tax increment district number five, known as the Washington Wilson Redevelopment District. Alderman Callahan, do you have this one?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Your Honor. As this is part of the proposal for the creation of TIF 6, there are portions that need to be dissolved in the current existing TIFs 1, 3, and 5. The next three items are those that deal with the dissolving of TIF 5 and the eliminating certain properties and amending the ordinance for areas in TIF 1 and TIF 3. Scott, do you want to address any of the, the first one as it relates to an ordinance dissolving tax increment finance district number five?
Sure.
21-01.
Yeah, so that, there's two groups of these ordinances, as you'd mentioned, 2101, 2102, and 2103 are three ordinances which involve either dissolving or disconnecting property from the various TIF districts. And then the 2104, 2105, and 2106 all relate to creating TIF 6. So, the first three have to be done first before you can create a new TIF district, which involves the dissolving. So, the first one is dissolving TIF district number five. This just involves a simple majority of the city council to dissolve that TIF district, and that would then, you know, allow that district, district to disappear. Ordinance 2102 would eliminate properties that were going to be contained within TIF number six that are currently in TIF number one. So, that would just remove those properties from that district. And then ordinance 2103 does the same thing, except it does it for properties within TIF number three.
Thank you, Scott. And to be clear, the reason, there was some information that was going out that these TIF items are not by, I know, Laura, you're concerned. It was related to emails or comments that were being posted that the, this dissolution of TIF 5 and the creation of TIF 6 did not have anything to do with the new development. But the, the underlying fact of the matter is that in order for the full term of the 23 years for the proposed One North Washington proposal, TIF 6 must be created according to the, the financials on it in order to pay itself back during that time. The current TIF 5 has 20 years remaining on it, and the parcels for the other two have varying terms, but it is no longer, it is not that long. So, the reason for dissolving TIF 5 would be to create TIF 6 in order for the project to financially be feasible.
Correct.
Correct, Scott.
Yes, that's right. And then, and then keep in mind also that TIF 6 is also a slightly larger geographical area that covers other properties besides just the one Washington project. So, it does include other properties. I would note it does not include the, the properties on the east side of River Street, though.
Correct. And that's where I think the, some of the confusion is, is this is a vote to kill or stop the proposal, or this or that. It solely ends 5, which has 20 years remaining, and creates 23 years. If TIF 6 did not pass, for whatever reason, and TIF 5 remained, it would be for the developer to figure out whether or not they could work in the existing remaining time to perform the construction during that time period. Just so that people understand that it's the, the technicalities of what's actually going on and to set expectations.
Thank you for explaining that. I think we needed to make sure we have clarity, understanding of everybody at the table here. So, are you, I'm handing you ordinance number 13, ordinance 2101. Do you want to make a motion, or you want to make some comments, or?
No, I'm sure people want to, no, I'm sure people want to talk about it. Based on all the emails that I did get from a lot of first-time people, too, I'm sure people do want to speak about it.
Hey Laura, you want to recognize folks?
Yes. So, do you want to start with council members and then go?
That is the normal process.
Hand up.
Thank you. I've, I've got a list. A lot of comments. I've, I've sat down and took the time to actually write them down rather than just going off of it. I've heard several times over the past few months that there's a million dollars waiting at the end of this rainbow. But for the city, it's only 80,000. $80,000 a year for the city. That's all the city is going to get from this in a property tax increase in 23 years. The biggest chunk of that money, I had written down 650, Laura, you just said 700,000, goes to the schools. The schools could take 5,000 a year for the next 23 years, or they could hold off and get 600, 700,000 in 23 years, and unanimously, the school board voted no. They said, "We, no, that's not what we want, not in our financial best interest." Sylvia brought up a great point. Any increase that the schools see as a result of this comes right back to the same taxpayers that are, are looking to get that windfall in 23 years. So, while this project may not impact property taxes because of the project in the city's portion of property taxes, look out for your tax bill from the, from the schools. Joe, can I interrupt for one second? I, I'd like to get through my list first.
Okay, go ahead.
I've, we've heard in the, in the last couple of months from some others on city council that they don't listen to community members because it's always the same people. Well, now those same people have been like a virus and spread the message out, and now we're getting hundreds of people. Alan, you just made a comment that they need to be quiet. I don't think so. They're speaking quite loud, and like the alderman and, and the city council in Geneva, I think we should listen to what our citizens are telling us. One of the comments, Alan, you just made, and, and actually, it was something that I was, I was waiting for somebody. I had a feeling somebody might bring it up. The silent yes votes, the silent supporters. I wonder if you go back and look at the presidential election we just had in November, those that didn't cast a vote, can we assume that they like things the way they were and they're, we really should just give one of the candidates all of those uncounted, un, un, unregistered votes? Because that's what you're saying here. The people that didn't speak up are the ones we need to hear from, are the ones we need to listen to, and the ones we need to go by. I don't, I don't. It's been out there. The communications have come in. There have been a few supporters of this that have made their feelings known in the last few days. Why hasn't there been a massive marketing or communication effort by any proponent group to get the same number of supporters emailing us? I don't understand why that hasn't happened. All we're hearing is from the people that are saying, "Too big for our town. We lose our quaint character that we have downtown." Somebody had made a, a comment, and I've heard it a couple of times, that the home rule referendum was all about building this project. No, it wasn't. If that was the reason for the home rule referendum, I was, I was misled because I would have been out there saying, "No way. That was not what home rule was for. Home rule was not a, a notice from the city to, from the residents to full speed ahead on this project. Separate projects. Don't confuse people by melding them together." And that's what I got on my list. I'm a solid no vote on this. Too many people have spoken up, and I'm going to listen to them.
Alderman Wolf?
I, I just wanted to respond to, to Joe's comment that the school district will just take that money out of other people's taxes. That's not true. In the redevelopment agreement and per state statute, if there are children generated by this project, that money comes out of the TIF proceeds. So, the school district does get their money for the students that are generated from this project.
Okay, anyone else? Alderman Beck?
I just wanted to go back to, to my earlier comment about the emails that we're getting and the, and the comments that I've received. When I, when I kind of click through all of the email messages, we do know the people that email us all the time. We do know who the usual suspects are that are against it, that are against this project, that are against home rule, et cetera, et cetera. And to Joe's point, we had a lot of new names come in this time. So, I have tallied, you know, what the votes have been, and then I have filtered because I can, and it's not really democratic. My email is not a democratic process, and I can weigh different opinions differently based on people that I know personally. I know that are following this project. I know that share the same vision and desires for our downtown that I do, and they're still 90% no on this project. I, I'm taking my lead from them. And Alan, to your point, too, I can completely understand how six years ago, we asked for this. We asked for, we asked for the big parking garage. We, we asked for the big project. And so, when we, that ask out into the world, this is the project we received. That makes sense. I think we can probably all agree that in 2021, we would not put that ask out into the world. We have seen how it goes. And, and that's not, it's not the, that's not the RFP we would have put out for that site. And I think that's a lesson moving forward, too. I mean, to the, in looking at the activity that we saw this summer down on River Street, maybe if we made a different ask, we saw, what is it, four or five of the boardwalk shops are moving into a brick and mortar shop together. So, we could look at the footprints that that building takes up. We could look at the, the footprint of that building, the parking that that building has. And if we could, if we could go year after year, looking at those boardwalk shops as true incubator spaces that will generate brick and mortar stores for four small artisans, and, and know that, hey, let's put, next to Bocadillos, let's put that footprint of a building down for the first place, first floor commercials, second floor officer, or, or residential, third store, third floor residential. That ask, I bet we would get multiple responses to that because there's more people out there in the world that can afford a $2 million building than can afford a $40 million building. And we'd have more options. We could build solo. And if it failed, if it totally didn't take and nobody rented it, it would not tank our downtown, like a $40 million building is going to tank our downtown. If in a post-COVID world, we can't fill those apartments, we can't fill that retail. It's a smaller risk, and I think that's what we need moving forward, are a lot smaller risks. And, and I, so I just want to reiterate again, it's not just the usual suspects saying no this time. It is informed people. It is engaged people that are engaged with the city, that are volunteering and working for the city that are still saying no. Let me make sure I got through my list because I also tried to write it down because I knew I was going to ramble. So, anyway, I think if we make a better ask in the future, we're going to get better, we're going to get better proposals back. I think it was just, in the 60s, we asked, in the 80s, we asked for those strip malls, I'm sure. Like, that was, that is what we wanted, and then now we don't. And so, we have to be thinking about what it's going to be 100 years down the road.
Alderman Callahan? Alderman Callahan?
Yeah, but I think Tony had his hand up before I did.
Okay, Alderman Malay. Oh, you have to turn on your microphone.
Sorry, I do it every day. You think I'd learn? Yeah, I was going to respond to Alan before the overwhelming number of emails we've gotten, I think is different than in the past. And, and thank you Abby for, you said it very well. I'm hearing from people that I haven't heard from before. I'm hearing from people that I have great respect for, that I think our critical thinkers are really concerned about this project. And the, and especially from Ward four, I would, would, I just counted today, I read over 100 emails and more than 25 of those were from residents of the fourth ward where this project is going to be or may not be. So I, you know, I take note to that because I represent them. They elect me. Joe, I think you would agree. And thank you for your comments. A multi-story residential building in downtown, we see these examples at different, different places. We looked at towns east of us, you know, Wheaton, Mary, you've brought up Elmhurst, how they've regenerated their downtown. And I think, you know, apart from the not having the train here, that which is a big part of that. But even, you know, West Chicago, look at those buildings. Look at what they look like. They're more stately. They're brick buildings. They're stone. They're mortar. They look like a more permanent downtown. They lend themselves to a more stately downtown. This project, I went and looked at it again. Not only is it enormous for the fourth ward in that part of town, it will block the view of the entire town for the fourth ward. It's primarily fiber cement siding. That's not brick and mortar. That's, that's, that's a cheap rendition of that, of a clad building. That's, that is significant. That will be, and that's the reason I bring this up is because that was one of the overwhelming things I read in the emails that I've gotten is it's an eyesore that we deserve better. We have a historic downtown. We have beautiful buildings, limestone out of our quarry right in town. Tomorrow, we're going to be discussing a measure for historic preservation, designating a landmark, historic landmark, but we're going to turn around a block away from there and put up something that does not match our downtown whatsoever. I find that very concerning. The, the other piece is, I would say, I had a discussion with my wife today and we realized the sun will never shine again on the farmer's market if we build this. It will, by the time the farmer's market's done, the sun is not high enough. Six-story building will block it out in the southern summer sky, summer sky. There will be no light ever on the farmer's market. And I think that would be a travesty. And finally, I would just say, you know, to my fellow older persons, please take into consideration that both the aldermen for Ward four are adamantly opposed to this project because we've heard loud and clear from our constituents. So I cannot support this project and dissolving TIF five leading to that is, I think where it starts is how we stop this project. That's my two cents.
And Alderman Callahan?
Thank you. I was really excited about having the discussion tonight, especially since our two lead in presentations for the BCDI and Britta's part with the intergenerational council. Both of those are trying to include more viewpoints, more views in this community from people that have never spoken before. And I want it to remain that positive. Because we have heard so many voices this past week that yes, it started with a foreword from Sylvia's organization that was utilized by one of our business owners that is right there that we say we are doing this for. We are doing this for the business community. And you heard tonight, four of the business owners stating their concerns with this. Their concerns about the issues for this and it's not new. They have been stating those things for years. So when we're saying we're doing something for somebody, make sure we know what we want. I go back to, I'm looking at our makeup currently and we are a boomer Gen X deciders. We are trying to think for the future for people that are Gen Y and Gen Z. They are the ones that are going to be 20, 30, 40 years old when this project's over. I'm going to be 73. My kids will be having the families. And what excited me originally about this changed in 2016, 2017, when it was no longer the scope of what I wanted. If I'm going to pay for something and we are going to pay for it, either money, time or treasure, I want to make sure that it's something that I want. As a result of that, I started looking into their emails to us and I'm seeing new emails from different people that I haven't seen. But I already knew there were different people because I'm already speaking out to people in the community. It wasn't just the normal 13 that is alleged that I haven't heard from before. I've been hearing these things over the years. My next door neighbors are coming to me and saying no. And they're not, they're not crazy tax people. They're people that have grown up here. Their kids have gone to high school and they're of the demographic that I belong to. So I was really excited when all these new people are talking about things. And I looked through the messages and yes, it comes back to some of the, you know, the divergence of the looks, the mass, the mass of it, the traffic of it. But no one, and I've said this in the past at one of our other meetings, no one is against development. There is nobody that's saying, keep that as a pasture for the sheep to graze in. None of the votes and the voices that we heard said, don't do anything. They said, we want to see something. They just want to see something that fits our community. And that has been consistent the entire time. Some people have just said, just a couple off, just a couple off. And we said to people, well, if there's the financial trade off. But to Abby's point, do we need it anymore? This last year has shown us and the business community that we need to think differently. Old perspectives don't have changed. Our, when we talk about, are we building for the future? Are we building for the future for those future people? Or are we building for ourselves for today of what we want? Because you can look at the rationale for shopping malls. They're all crumped together. You have a variety of options. You have choices. You have foot traffic. On paper, it sounds good, but nobody's building malls anymore. Why? Because the, it's changed. The era of big house, big houses, big cars and big box stores is gone. The era of immediate gratification is gone. We don't have to lump one big building and they will come. The demographics for what people want are billed incrementally. There is a coming back to basics in this country because for 50, 60 years, we have overspent and we have ended up with all the infrastructure problems that we currently have. We are paying for the past sins of others. We do not need to compound that. So I will just, like everybody else, I think I've just kind of said everything that I want to say. I go to the, Nick, you know, I love my analogies. We know we want a car. We know we can't, we can't buy a Mini because it doesn't sort us. But at the same time, why are we buying a Humvee? It doesn't fit us. It doesn't fit our needs. Thank you.
Alderman, you're?
Yeah, I mean, I honestly don't have a lot more to add than what has been said so far. I just kind of want to have my voice in there. If I think back to when I first joined councils, when this was really first starting to get the approvals. And, and I was in favor of it back then. And I'm glad everything kind of fell apart in the past several years in the way this has progressed because I've had a lot more time to ruminate on this and realizing it's just not the right thing anymore. It might have been the right thing when we started and I just don't, I just don't believe that it is. And that's why my vote has changed over time to no. There was a yes with the original retail, then a no when retail went away. You would think it'd be a yes when the retail came back. But I just think it's oversized for that location. I think Tony mentioned it before. It's, it's, it's cement. It's a cement building. It's a cement clad building. Yes, it's got color in it, but it is not Batavia. Nothing about that building is going to look like Batavia. It's going to look like Oswego. And I mentioned this before, it's cookie cutter. And Mr. Patel said, no, it's not because it's, it's got, it's an E shape and the one in Oswego isn't that way. Well, okay, great. You can, you can also say that a Buick SUV is not the same as a Chevy SUV, but they're the exact same thing. They come off the same assembly line. So we don't, I don't want to have stuff in our in our city that is assembly line material and we should have something that is unique to Batavia. We should have something that is the right size for Batavia. And again, I'm a no vote on this. And hopefully we can, hopefully something does show up there in the future.
And Alderman, you're not to, you know, try to sway your opinion any, but the, I do want to point out that the developer did try to put elements into this project that paid homage to the city of Batavia. There will be a bell tower element at the southeast corner of the project to replicate the bell tower of the First Baptist Church. The other thing was in the retail space that is located at the corner of North River Street and State Street. The windows were designed to complement the same type of windows that are on the building where six plus Cypress is as well. And these were both elements that were very persuasive to our historic preservation committee. And when they were looking at the, how the building, the building's designed. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. I appreciate some of those efforts. It just, it's not enough, to be honest. I mean, it just, it's, it's a token, but nobody's going to notice those tokens. They're going to notice that, oh, hey, look at it, it's a main board up and down the facade of the building. Yet there's some, there's some brick, there's some limestone on the lower portions, but there's nothing significant that is looks like our, you know, our significant buildings in town, the, the building that six plus Cypress is in. That's, that's a gorgeous building. If the whole, if this whole thing looked like that, I think you'd have significant objections to this. And you might even have a yes vote for me if it looked completely like that. I know that would raise the cost and the developer doesn't want to spend that much money on something because that just lengthens their, the timeline and their return on investment.
That's correct. We put so many restrictions on what we deem is acceptable. We may not have any offers from developers. And if that's an acceptable outcome, that's an acceptable outcome. Alderman Surroun, did I see your hand up?
You did. No, I just wanted to take a different angle on this. It's from, from a different perspective up high looking at this. It's interesting because a few years ago, take all these nitpicking variables out, there was excitement. We were all excited because this was going to, from a development standpoint, this was going to answer all our, all our prayers for struggling downtown, which is still struggling. Right now, from a sociology standpoint, excitement's been replaced with fear. And as we get closer, the unknown has taken over. The people don't really know what it's going to look like, but they're afraid it's going to look ugly. The businesses don't know if they're going to survive, so let's not change anything. Fear is the number one motivation for everyone opposing this right now. And unfortunately, that's a sad reality and I'd hate to see it get lost based on fear. This is still an exciting project. There's still great potential. And a perfect example is Melissa with the river's edge. This might be the savior for her. But she's in a position of fear and I don't blame that. I mean, it's a position we've been in and COVID certainly has accentuated that. But I think a lot of the opinions and voices are, are not based on fact, they're based on fear. And I just wanted to point that out as we talk about everyone's opinions. As we get closer, fear becomes more and more important.
Alderman Baron?
I'd like to share why I support creating TIF six and the One Washington Place project. And this is what I sent out to the constituents in my ward that reached out to me. Where I wish my answer could be summarized in one simple sentence, it is not. I've learned over the last year in attending meetings, asking questions, listening to discussions, reading pages of documents and looking at other, other developments. There are multiple factors to the development, positive and negative. The economic impact during the budget process has become apparent that to continue improving the infrastructure and providing the level of service expected by our residents and businesses, we have to create a certain amount of revenue. Much of that revenue comes from property taxes, sales taxes and home rule taxes. To keep our property taxes affordable, we need to find other revenue resources. This happens by creating density in our downtown. These residents, along with our current Batavians, will shop our businesses, eat and drink in our restaurants and bars in supporting our businesses. Based on the economic impact report, the One Washington project plan is expected to bring in a good number of tradespeople right in the beginning. Tradespeople will be working on this project, will seek places to eat during their lunchtime. And because time is limited, they will not have time to travel to Randall or Kirk Road. They'll be looking for places nearby within walking distance from the site. Businesses will have a captive audience to provide services. And as people begin to run out the apartments, again, we'll have a captive audience. I remember when St. Charles First Street project began this process. There was a ton of pushback just like this, lots of fear from businesses and residents. But they, but they have just finished building their second apartment building along the riverfront. Plan for 2021 within the development area is building seven, which is a four story residential building and building eight, which is a three story commercial building. Why is this important? Because after the initial fear, concern, they have looked at the benefits of these dense developments and the positive impact on their community and residents. As a single mom raising my daughter in Batavia, each month I need to decide which businesses I can support for that month. Moreover, this is true for others in our community living paycheck to paycheck and living on a fixed income. So relief from new community members is welcome. Construction impact. Projects of this magnitude can be discomforting. Certainly not knowing how it will impact a person's ability to move around a construction zone. The developer has provided an aerial view of fence construction zone and showing sidewalk closings. But no businesses, no business access is blocked. Worse concerns about traffic impact. As part of this project, a traffic study was completed. Finding concluded that the development would have minimal impact on traffic. The decline in LOS, level of service, due primarily to the normal background growth of traffic on area streets. Summary findings. Time for construction is never good for established businesses. There's always a reason why now is not a good time. Over and over, people have mentioned doing smaller projects. Long term, what impact will different construction projects have on this area? Will these developments really bring the density their downtown needs to grow? Will the timing be right? Will the plans be right? If we do not move forward with One Washington Place development, there is not a guarantee we will have anything in the future. We have already turned away another developer in development. Developers that are willing to tackle new constructions are numbered in this area. I would hate to see Batavia get passed up in the future. The city has made a tremendous investment to prepare for this project, including land acquisition and site prep, updating utilities, demolition of existing structures, which can be recouped. demolition of existing structures, which can be recouped in the new TIF. If the current TIF generates $7,000 per year and has 20 years left, it would generate just under $150,000 for the investments that have already been made. This does not cover those costs. I will support moving forward with establishing TIF 6 and One Washington Place Development as the short-term and long-term benefits for our small businesses, citizens and visitors will be seen into the future. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have one.
Oh, go ahead, Alderman Beck.
Um, to what you said, Nick, about, about excitement versus fear, I'm also a little worried about the anger and the mistrust that also is brewing behind the scenes. And I know that we talk a lot about the, that Batavia's reputation. And if we turn away this development, then we're never going to get another one and developers are not going to want to work here. I think we also have to look at our small business community and say, are our small businesses going to want to work here? Are the small business, you know, our new small businesses going to want to work or move into Batavia, you know, depending on how, how we handle, how we handle certain things? And, and it's hard. I mean, I know that, that growing small or growing slow is not as satisfying a way to, to grow. It may not feel like it's going to be enough to sustain us. But the, the parts of our downtown that are occupied and the parts that we highlight, you know, the Shumway Studios is highlighting in their throwback pictures and the, the ones that are getting the most, that, that people take the most pride in, those are all, those were all built at different times. Those buildings were not all built in one bell scoop. That's how we used to build. And so, and they're still standing and they're still really productive. And the places that are empty are the places that were built one block at a time. And that has me really concerned. And, but it's hard. It's hard not to think that we, that it's, it's going to work if we don't do it all right now when we have somebody that's willing to do it. But I just, the risks have gotten too high for me.
And Callahan, I think, was next, and then Alderman Malay.
Yeah, no, I'm not going to speak. I just wanted to let you know, I received a message that Mike voted or boned in. He's, his hand is up. He still wanted to speak. So when it's time to discuss with the public, don't think that he, it's, his hand is just still up. He just wanted to make sure that they got that out there.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Malay.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm on this iPad and it's, it's easier when I'm on my laptop. Yeah, I wanted to respond to this idea of fear. You know, I'm not fearful of having a bad building. I know it's going to be a bad building. I see the rendition, I see the picture. I've been in construction, I know what it's going to look like. I know what this product is, the fiber cement board siding. You know, sure, it might be colors, but that colors don't match our downtown. And I would remind you, look at these other developments out of these high-rise residences and some of the other towns that have done these, they look like much nicer buildings. That's, this is a residential building that's built to look like a residential building, not to look like a downtown mixed-use building. But back to the fear, I would say the fear is this, this idea that if we don't take this, we're going to be out of luck. You know, that, that message of fear, that fear mongering, because I've heard that, you know, I've been, you all know that I've been opposed to this for a while. But the, you know, the, the amount that I've been hearing from, from the citizens that I represent is growing. And the, this fear that we better take this because there's going to be nothing else. If that's what we're down to, God help us. So that's all I have to say about that.
Can I respond to that? Yeah. I feel like a defense attorney. I'm not fearful either way. I think the mayor said it best, no matter what happens, I'm confident in Batavia and it's going to, Batavia is always going to be Batavia. This building's not going to define it and the lack of a building's not going to define it. So I said that when, when I was a no vote in the middle of this in the negotiation process. And that was the, the verbiage was, oh, we can't let this go. Nobody else is coming. It didn't stop me from a no vote. I'm not, I'm not afraid of that, but I think that the time is right and everything's in alignment. So I'm saying, don't. We're fearing a lot of our unknown things like, oh, do we need parking? Do we need, we don't have the answers. And we're fearful of making the wrong decision, but it's a 50/50 toss-up. If we don't get it, I'm just as fearful of missing as I am fearful of doing it. So just wanted to respond to that. There's fear on both sides.
Okay, do we want to move to the comments from the public now?
Yeah.
I would like to say something.
Mike wanted to speak.
Yeah.
Okay, Mike.
You know, when I first was running for Alderman six years ago, I heard a lot more stick, a lot of people wanting a more vibrant downtown. That was a big focus on a lot of people back then. And through conversations over the weekend, I had some people say the same thing to me as when I ran six years ago. We have the basic six businesses downtown. We have Walgreens, McDonald's, Katrina's and El Taco Grande. We're sitting there with, Gaitano's been empty for a year, Pell Joey's for two years. We had Panera closed. Everybody remembers, I first moved to Batavia 22 years ago. Right before that, there was a restaurant in Opel Joy's building called Chops on the Fox. They put a lot of money and effort into that building on the hopes that the downtown Batavia was going to grow and become nicer, which we eventually did. It took time. They went out of business. It was a very nice restaurant, dueling pianos, et cetera. It was great, but they went out of business and they blamed Batavia for not doing or taking enough action. Talking to some of the businesses that have gone out of business, they all say, summertime's great, wintertime, we're done. We need more rooftops. And I think this is something that could help Batavia. As far as the parking concerned, you know, the U.S. Census Bureau came out on December 2 of this year that 28% of households in the United States were made up of a one individual person alone. Another 35% of U.S. households only had two people, of which that 65% of that 35% were married. So I don't think that the parking is going to be an issue. It seems like parking has always been an issue. Traffic has been an issue since we came to Batavia. Marty, you had given the Republic newspaper from 1979, it had a picture on front page, Ridlock and Batavia. So nothing's changed, you know? And I bring that up to people and, because we do, we get a lot of emails from people that have been here three years, five years. And I say, that's my first question when I talk to them, how long have you been here? And I've been here through, through 22 years. The mayor's been here longer. Our downtown, with the exception of doing River Street, really doesn't look a lot different from 20 years ago. We're still in the same spot. I mean, the boardwalk shops were great and that, that's a starting point. But I think that rooftops is what's going to make downtown Batavia. And I think this project could do that.
Yeah, Laura, yeah, just before we go to, thank you for reading that article. It was 1971, I think, though, when I found.
I knew it was sometime in 1970s. You had a picture of it or you posted it or something.
Yeah, I, I don't even think Jeff was the mayor at that point.
I think it was the Batavia Republic newspaper.
Right.
Yes.
Going to what?
Then it would have been.
Yeah, no, just kind of going with what Mike had said. I agree, you know, times change, things change, the mass changes, traffic changes, et cetera. But it goes back to kind of what Mike even alluded to and Abby's pointed out. Here's my I'm not afraid moment of wanting to be, making sure that our downtown, and this for me is kind of a proud Papa moment, because I remember when I was just saying, ooh, I should bring up this idea for the boardwalk shops. And all I had to do was just be kind of a parent who creates something and we all latched onto that. And we wanted to see it succeed and we turned it over to people that we trusted that knew they were going to succeed. And just like that proud parent that you see your little kid grow up, look how many of the emails say they want more of that. They don't want more of the big, they want more of what we're cultivating. And yes, it hasn't changed a lot, but that's because it is what people want. It is what you come to this place for. It is that Free Haze Star Hollow kind of feel where you just feel unique. We're not unique by any stretch of the imagination, but this town is a little weird. We need to embrace the weird, not austensired, but weird.
I'm hoping that we can, in the future, have a balance of those things because it will take a lot of the boardwalk shop type of business. I'm not sure we even have enough room in our downtown for as many of those that it would take to generate the same amount of economic impact that a project like One Washington Place will generate for us. But certainly, I think it's been a tremendously successful incubator beyond anyone's wildest dreams. I mean, it absolutely hit. Yeah, to say it was a home run, I mean, it was a whole game full of home runs is, is really what it was. But we'll need both types of projects in our future if we don't want to rely on raising the property taxes of the rest of Batavia.
Right, and I think we want to go to the, oh, I think somebody wanted to.
Hey Laura.
Yes.
You know, I just remember in, was it 2011? I mean, the mayor had alluded to it a few months ago. When we tried to do River Street, and River Street was my idea. And when I presented that, I presented that with the Seventh Ward Alderman, Don Tenuta, if you remember that, Mr. Mayor.
Yep.
We presented that and the pushback on that was incredible. I mean, nobody wanted it. As the mayor said, there was a lot of political capital given up on that. We got it through. And I think in hindsight now, River Street is quite successful. And the people who opposed to it are now enjoying the, the fruits of it when we have any kind of gathering place, when we have the farmers markets. Same thing could be said for the Batavia Library. The pushback on the Batavia Library was incredible. Everyone said you can't take down the, the middle school or the high school, whatever it was, where we went to school. I mean, the pushback on that was incredible. And now we have the best library in all of the Fox Valley. So I know that there's pushback on, on One Washington Place, but I think it takes some vision to, to, to see it through, to, to its fruition. As far as the design of it is, you know, I have a lot of confidence. And I don't know the people at, at the developers either, but I think some of the work they've done has been pretty good. I hear a lot of negative things about them. I have not witnessed that from David Patzel, okay? But the, it's only a six-story building. It's, it's, it's an apartment building. It's a residential building. It's not a residential building or a high-rise building that gets made of concrete and glass. That's more of a composite building. But the siding that they are using is a 50-year siding. So it is, it has some longevity to it. So I just wanted to put some thoughts out there. Thank you.
Laura, Stan.
Oh, Dan.
No, I can, I can wave that.
Yeah, I just would, would comment, Mike, the, you're, I thank you for bringing River Street to us. I think it's fantastic. I just don't want to cast a shadow over it now because that's the reality, that a six-story building is going to cast a shadow on a highlight of our town. If you don't believe me, you know, realize that, that the height of that thing, they won't, you won't see sun until well into the afternoon. That, you know, that's a beautiful time at the farmer's market in the morning when you go there and the sun is coming up. That just, it'll be a shadow. And, and I think it, you know, speaks volumes or kind of a symbolic of casting a shadow over a great project by going with this monster project. And the, you know, I understand fiber cement clad is, is a long-term life, but it does not compare with limestone. I'm sorry.
Alderman Chanet.
Thank you. So there's not a lot I can add to the discussion. I actually really enjoyed listening to everything that we've talked about tonight. I guess I would, I would bring up this. And Marty, you mentioned the, the proud Papa moment. How, how many of us are on the call tonight at this council meeting remember the executive session where we first heard about this project five, six years ago? I remember driving home that night feeling super excited. We saw plans for a dozen townhomes with, that kind of looked like the townhomes I live in. Not anything special, maybe, maybe they were kind of nice. But we looked at that and said, no, that's not, that's not the character we're looking for for that area if we're going to buy this block and make something happen here. 12 townhomes, that's not going to cut it. Then we saw another plan that had quite a few townhomes, not condos, nothing close to where we're at today. And we looked at that plan and said, yeah, that's kind of cool. Actually, that gives us some of that density that we've been hearing about for years that large businesses are not looking at our downtown, you know, national brands, Starbucks and whatnot, not going to go downtown Batavia because there just simply aren't enough units. There's not enough mailboxes. And the only way to get that is by, is by building something larger. So yeah, I remembered that meeting, we turned even that plan down because we saw the third one that showed a lot of units. And with those lot of units meant that inside the core of that building, we could get a really nice parking deck that we still wouldn't have to pay for. I remember driving home that night feeling so excited that all those years of surveys where people were begging for revitalization to happen, and finally we had this direction, we had a developer, we didn't have all the land, but we felt like we could acquire it and we knew that we could make this thing happen. And we agreed to work together. That was something to be excited about. Five, six years later, I'm frustrated. I'm not afraid of, of a no, because I know something good will happen. I'm afraid of, we just blew five years. That's, that's a long time to tread water and to work together. And all these meetings that we, we had where, where we called Dave in and said, we're going to vote no unless he comes in here and explains himself. Well, he did. And he seemed to be a reasonable kind of guy, explaining himself as every time we've asked him, asked him to do that. This time has passed and even council members have changed. There are new people serving who were not in the executive session that night that we first, you know, gave birth to this thing. So I can understand why, as time has gone on, the enthusiasm definitely did start to wane. And as each new problem cropped up, there was another reason to hate this project or at least to feel less excited about it. All of this compounded by very poor communication. We didn't necessarily see it until it was too late, but Abby, you brought that up. Yeah, Batavians for Responsible Government did a really good job of controlling the narrative on this. And I, yeah, Sylvia did ask, you know, if I have misinformation, we should correct it. We should probably be a lot more vocal about some of the crap that that organization has put out. So yeah, we probably should improve our communications plan. Had we done that, we might have done a, a better job. We might have felt a little better about coming to tonight's meeting, not popping a half of Xanax like I did earlier. Listening to people complain over the last several months, listening to people who I agree, who are absolutely educated, who are people who I trust, who are asking me, why the hell do you still support this thing? It's because I remember how excited I was that night. Now I'm reading emails from people saying, look at all the school kids are going to be pouring. Now I'm reading emails from people saying, look at all the school kids are going to be pouring into the Batavia School District because of all these apartments that you just approved downtown. Or another one that said, hey, I support revitalization efforts in the downtown, but building a very large apartment building is a step in the wrong direction. I take for granted that during this time, we have read a lot of memos, we have read a lot of reports and seen a lot of information. We get paid, what is it, 340 bucks a month after taxes for this job? You know, you get frustrated with a teenager, you can't say, I don't want to be a parent anymore. There's a part of me that says that each, each year that has gone by, I've felt more responsible for, for this project and more interested in, in understanding the intricacies of it. I wish this, this had broke ground two, three years ago. It's unfortunate that it didn't. And that's, that's where I'm at tonight. I'm still a yes. I'm still excited because I believe that this kid, uh, the, the proud Papa thing, I believe this kid, this project is going to turn out to be, you know, who I want him to turn out to be. And I'm still willing to take that risk. Because if I turn my back on him, I turn my back on that, that great excitement that I, I used, I used to have. I'm, I'm, I'm still a yes. I can't wait to see this thing happen. Um, and I guess if Dave Patzel's on the line, uh, I would be very curious if and when this thing winds up in court. What are the, what are the grounds? Is it because, is it because we told you to build this big thing and then we changed our mind five years later? I, if we have to break up, I want it to be the cleanest breakup possible. But I really want this thing to happen. Now that's it.
Okay, any other comments from Alderman before we allow members of the public to provide their comments?
Uh, yes, Laura, Alderman Miller.
Yes, Alderman Miller.
Uh, I, I, I thank you. I too have enjoyed, um, the conversation tonight and the conversation over the last, uh, almost two years here. I've been, um, largely listening to understand and reading past meetings and comments to get a full understanding of the project. I, I'll keep myself, I'll keep this short. I, um, I definitely liked hearing about this project when I first moved here. Density in downtown, having people is, is, is great. I'm, I am not opposed to that. I'm, I'm just saying that this is probably, this is not the right one for us. There's been a lot of issues over the time that have given me pause. I feel like I'm the frog being put in the pot and it's already hot. And I'm, I'm sensing it's time to, to get out. I want to, um, I, I am a no for creating this TIF. Um, I would like to see, um, us hold our ground and make, make the developer decide what it is he really wants to do. So I, I love, I, I, I've come to love this town. I want, I want to continue to grow this town. I just do not think that this one is the right one for us. I do think there are other developers who will step in. It's just a matter of, we are in negotiations with someone right now and there's an unwritten rule that they don't want to cross and talk to someone who's already talking to someone else. I hope that is the case. And, um, I, I will be voting no for this. Thank you, Laura.
Thank you. I will move on to Michael Bonin, who has patiently waited here. Are you there, Michael?
Oh, I'm here for the last four hours. You know, it, it's been kind of refreshing, you know? I loved listening to everybody tonight. Both sides have really put up some really good points. Something I want to bring up that I believe I read about a month or two ago was one of the old historic bank buildings was recently going to be turned into a comedy club. Doesn't that bring more revenue to the city? Aren't smaller things like that where it's not really a large cost to anybody? Or, um, as Mr. Malay said, you know, casting a shadow, you know, upon the street, which I'm totally in agreement with him. Aren't things like that something we should be more focused on? The downtown little, the boardwalk shops, what a great idea. These are things that aren't taking a lot from the community in regards to congestion of traffic, large construction. That's bringing a nice little new breath to the community. I'm so excited for the comedy club. I love to laugh and that's something that we all need. And hopefully coming post pandemic, that's something we're all going to be able to enjoy. So I'm not opposed to the construction. I'm imposed, I'm opposed to the large amount of construction. I would love to see something else to be more beneficial to the community that I want to be a part of, that my wife and daughter, we're, we're a three member family. So we're a smaller family compared to a lot of the other families we see where there's four, five, six members. We love it. Give us something more to look forward to because building this building, it, it does nothing for me. It, it, it takes away from me and I don't know if that's helpful or not to anybody. It, it's my opinion, I've had an opinion twice tonight and that's more than I've ever put in anywhere that I've lived throughout the United States. And I thank you so much for that. I, I want the best for this community and so be it. If this building is the best for the community, then, then I'm still here to support the shops and everything that I possibly can. But I think there are much, much better options and things that can be done. And you know what? If a company sticks around for five, six years trying to push a project, maybe sometimes there's alternative objectives, you know? You should look at everything. And if you've taken five years, what's another six months to a year? We're all just sitting at home anyways. I thank you all so very much for letting me have a voice. I'm still proud to be a part of this community. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Next we have Jay Kozak. Go ahead, Jay. Jay Kozak? Did you have a comment that you wanted to make? You just muted yourself, Jay. I am going to, uh, now? I'm going to come back to you, Jay. Next is Jamie Sam. I have unmuted you, Jamie. But you have to turn on your microphone.
Can you hear me? I think I'm unmuted.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, good. I actually didn't raise my hand, but since you called on me, I might as well speak since we're all up at almost midnight together, right? So I guess, you know, just quickly, because you guys all got my emails and you know that I've been on this journey with all of you for the last six years. So first I appreciate everybody, seriously, uh, those for it, those against it. I think there's been a lot of good comments here today. Um, I'm so happy that we saw some of our downtown business owners pop on here. This is an even more confusing forum to talk on and get up and communicate on than in person at our meetings. So I just appreciate them getting up and sharing, uh, what they have to say and their feelings. Really, I just, I think I'm just going to touch on like, uh, not Nick, not to pitch and hold you on your fear comment, but, but I'm gonna. I think, I think that is, that is a big thing that I've seen a lot of and I think, um, but it's valid. You know, we, if these business owners feel this way and you're hearing it from basically all of those surrounding business owners. You know, they, they're all saying the same thing when they're asking questions like, what is the timeline of the construction? What are the hours that are going to be able to work? They're showing you that they fear the impacts of their business. And these are people that, you know, yes, if this happened two years ago, I even said this in my email, would my thoughts have been a little bit different? Yes, but we are, they're still navigating COVID, um, still fighting for their businesses, sticking with our community. Um, and I don't think anybody on this council is against them. I don't think anybody at city staff is against the businesses that are existing. I just think we need to now more than ever, listen to what their call out is and what their thoughts are on this. And none of their fears are invalid. They're there at their businesses every day. They see when, uh, look at what just happened on Route 31. Um, I think the city did a great job once it was brought to their attention that there needed to be an increase of communication over there. You know, we saw a couple of our Aldermen, Abby and Mark in particular, get up and go out and walk and meet those 31 businesses. But, you know, they, they struggled, they fought with their sidewalks being closed. They struggled, they fought with their, um, lack of signage in their area. And while the city did step up and help, that was a much smaller scale project. But they had fears and they were navigating COVID and they were fighting to get people to understand how to get into their businesses and how to get over there. Some of them shut down for times because it was hard for them to, um, share that they were open with as much of the public as possible. So I think when we hear from people like Casey and James and Melissa at River's Edge, and you hear from Denise asking about, she just moved her business. She was on River Street in a space and for a different reason scooched over a little bit right onto Wilson Street. Uh, redid completely a gorgeous space, um, is continuing to stick with Batavia, but is hoping that, you know, the city helps her stay here. She's invested dollars in two locations now. Um, and she's fearful that this is going to impact her over the next three years. Do these businesses have it in them to be able to fight for their business for the next three years? Um, and then I guess just one of the things that I, I put it in the email to you guys, but obviously the public doesn't see that necessarily. Um, I do think that, what does that look like? So we've got, yes, we have vacant spaces on River Street already. Does this create more vacancies in those surrounding businesses because they can't withstand the construction that happens there? Um, I was going back and forth with a couple of business owners earlier and as we're talking about the parking situation. You know, we, we've talked a lot about the boardwalk shops tonight and how great they've been, right? They've, we've got four businesses joining together from the boardwalk shops to move into their individual spaces within one building. We've got another one moving onto River Street. Uh, we've got another one who just announced this, they haven't announced officially the space, but they're moving right outside of downtown. Uh, we've got another one that's going to potentially be opening right in downtown should some things fall into place. Seven out of the eight businesses at the boardwalk shops that will be permanently in our downtown as long as they can be. Our hopes are next year, we have eight to 10 new businesses that come into those spaces again. If we don't have anywhere to park people to come see them, um, what are we going to do? You know, I mean, uh, Michael Marconi owns the space, the parking lot behind to the bank building there. And I'm very excited about this comedy club, but now he's going to need that parking for his comedy club. And we have very limited city public parking back there. We have limited public parking on, in the, uh, boardwalk shop space. So it's been a shared fluid movement from River Street to the boardwalk shops and to Ruby Jane and places like that right there on Wilson. And now where are all those people going to be able to, um, come down here and, and park? You know, hopefully they'll ride their bikes, hopefully they'll walk. But as we all know, we can hope that happens. Um, and sometimes it'll happen more often than others. When you've got a construction zone too, less people are going to be riding their bikes and walking down in that area. So I just think there's, there's a lot of things to consider because of the way things have shifted recently. You know, I, I don't want to have all of our thoughts be focused on, we should or shouldn't do it because of one thing, meaning COVID. But I do think it needs to be considered right now. I think that's what we're dealing with right now and you have to look at what is on the table right now, what these businesses are dealing with right now. Um, and what they're going to be dealing with for this next year. I talked briefly with Beth today, she was kind of asking the timeline at Main Street of what a normal year looks like because she came into a not normal year. And we realized that next, this 2021 is not going to be a normal year either because you still don't know if you can ever host gatherings throughout 2021. You still don't know what capacity you can, um, host downtown events, host indoor gatherings, host indoor dining. So it's still an unknown, so you're still navigating that. So when does construction start? At what point are these businesses going to be through all of those unknowns? And now we're throwing another one on them. So I just, you know, I appreciate, I know you guys all are thinking about that. I appreciate you listening to the businesses. I think it's so important because these are people that have stuck with us through thick and thin. And, um, our community adores them and loves them and they showed that during COVID. And what a sad sight if, if they're so beaten down that they just can't go through another thing again. So I appreciate you considering that. That's not the like, and I'll be all for your decisions here tonight, but I do appreciate you considering all of that and really taking time to listen to them. Um, and those of you that responded to them and got out and personally spoke to them and spoke to our property owners, it's really important. So thank you.
Hey, uh, Nick, did you have your hand up? No, okay.
Okay. For six years.
I know. Just the, the last word that I have on this, I think what I would miss the most if we didn't build this was the economic impact that building it and having 400 new residents in our downtown would do for the vitality of our downtown. And I feel very bad for the businesses that that doesn't seem to have any positive, that doesn't seem to have any positive appeal, um, to them, uh, that they do have so much fear about any construction. Because it really would be any construction, no matter the size of this project, what I hear is construction is probably going to be fatal for my business. But I'll just really miss the, the economic impact that this could have had for everyone downtown and also the positive impact on our city budget.
Laura?
Yes.
Yeah, I think Jay Kozak is on now.
Jay, go ahead. Jay, we're not able to hear you. Your microphone looks live. And also Sylvia would like to speak.
Laura, are you also seeing a Kerry Wosman?
Uh, not with a hand up, but I'll, I'll take a look.
Cause she, I received.
Okay, go ahead Sylvia.
Okay, Laura, what I heard, I didn't hear what you heard. What I heard was that massive construction will be failed to business. Not that smaller construction that will take a shorter amount of time, a little bit here, a little bit there. That's not, that's what I heard. I heard that the massive construction that will go over a long period of time will be failed to business. And I put out a survey on Nextdoor. That's not some little group of misguided people. Uh, as this meeting started, there were 135 votes, 86% no, that's 116 people, 14% yes. And there were 10 more no votes that I got via email from people who aren't on Nextdoor. And that reached out, or I put that out there. I put it out, why Nextdoor instead of Facebook? Uh, because the people on Nextdoor actually live in their neighborhoods unlike Facebook. I selected 10 neighborhoods that were entirely in Batavia and the ones that I could see. I couldn't reach the neighborhoods on the other side of Randall Road, nor up by Fabian. And the ones that had parts of Aurora, I discount, I left them out because I wanted it to be representative of Batavia. And with the Nextdoor poll, you could only answer the poll once. Was this perfect? No, but it's best I could do to hit a wide variety of people to get a general feel for what the residents think. And the response was overwhelmingly negative. It was not out of fear. I didn't ask why they were against it, but from the comments posted, the most common reasons were it's too big and out of character for our town. Again, it, it's not fear that, that people are against this. They, they have a sense of what Batavia is, they moved to Batavia for a reason. And this is not Batavia, this does not speak Batavia. And this is something they're going to have to see whenever they cross the bridge. It's not like the mayor has talked about people opposing the condos, uh, up by the river for being too big. But those are tucked away in the back. Those aren't in the main thoroughfare through town. People have a right to be worried about that or to, to not want that kind of building in their town. And Shodin has almost finished the first phase of a project extremely similar to ours in Oswego. You may have seen the article on their December 15th Village, Village Board Meeting. I watched the meeting. A great deal of time was spent on the additional expenses that were not anticipated on the RDA. Hundreds of thousands of dollars in unanticipated costs this year alone. It was estimated that by April 30th, 2021, they will have borrowed around $10 million from their general capital and water funds that will not be recovered by the increment because all of Shodin's increment will go to the bonds. They too have a backup SSA in place, should the property taxes not be enough to cover their. They too have a backup SSA in place should the property taxes not be enough to cover their bonds. And they said they do not expect the property taxes to be sufficient to cover the bonds. And this SSA would have to be utilized. This is coming from Oswego, who is a, way ahead of us in their project that is so similar to ours. They are hoping that other new development might help replenish the uh, the reserves that they were, that they had to borrow from. But there are several aldermen who don't even think that that's possible. They, they have a, so when you're thinking about this, when you're thinking about another, as I say, you're thinking about the money that's gonna come in. Don't forget about the debt that you have already incurred. And the other costs that you may not have thought of yet and that weren't mentioned in the uh, RDA. So this is not gonna be the windfall that you're hoping. I want you to have a realistic view of this. So they, let's see. And how many businesses have now signed contracts for Shodin's new commercial space in Oswego? They're ready to start uh, renting out the apartments in February and I think soon after that, the, from what I've read, the, the businesses. Uh, how many of them, how many businesses are jumping at the opportunity be on this fantastic ground floor, this amazing business opportunity? From a resident I know in Oswego, they've heard that there are none so far. Maybe Mr. Petzel can tell us otherwise, but I've, that they've heard that there are no signed contracts as of yet. And our project hangs on promises. If you build it, they will come. That was said about River Street, but there's still vacancies on River Street. The same promise was made in Oswego, but so far there's been no rush. Times have changed. Brick and mortar businesses are risky nowadays. Just look at Randall Road, look at all those vacancies. To think that if you build a commercial space and they will be filled instantly, that's not necessarily realistic. I've heard over and over tonight that communication is important, but if it's so important, why has there been none till now? You hired a communications coordinator that is being paid to communicate and there was one even before that. I hear the promise of better communication. Well, when will the important communication start? All these empty promises should be, promises should be carefully considered. Um, if you're gonna think that now communication is gonna start all of a sudden because, I don't know why, because we said so. Um, think about that carefully. Now I'd like you to look at another city that took a different tack. The Chicago Tribune ran a story last month on the Geneva City Council's rejection of a large Shodin proposal at the Mill Race site. Quote, "At a special city council committee of the whole meeting November 30th, all 10 aldermen voted against a concept plan for eight townhomes, 116 rental apartments and 2,000 square feet of commercial space as well as parking and public riverfront improvements at the site of 4 East State Street." Um, then it goes on, Alderman Eugene McGowan was opposed to the size of the project. "I don't feel the size of the project is right for this location. I don't feel it is right to build to the sidewalk on a portion of, of land literally adjacent to the Fox River," McGowan said. "For these reasons and many more that we have all seen in emails from residents who are adamantly asking us, please don't approve this. I didn't receive a single email from someone who said, I love this project, please vote yes," end quote. Geneva aldermen listened to their constituents. They have a vision for their town and expect new construction to fit their vision. They didn't argue that they knew better, that it would bring new businesses to downtown. But the residents might not like it now, but you'll see, they'll be happy it's there later. They respected the people who they were elected to represent. The citizens don't support this. It sounds like the businesses it is supposed to help don't even support it. If you won't listen to us lowly citizens, at least the businesses should carry weight. Referring back to the article, the Geneva mayor said something that could apply, as was aptly described by a business owner, to the fear and desperation of some aldermen, that we need this project because we need something there now. "It is not the citizens who are afraid," Alderman Saron and Baron, "the citizens have not fear but hope for a new, better project." For the alderman who's fear, from Geneva, quote, "Where we stand now as a community is to take a pause, relax and wait for whatever opportunity may come our way for reconsideration." Geneva Mayor Kevin Byrne said, "Oftentimes when we are patient, a resolution is reached that satisfies what is expected," end quote. I'll repeat that last line again because it's important. "Oftentimes when we are patient, a resolution is reached that satisfies what is expected." Please, please learn from other towns, listen to constitutions like, constituents like Geneva did and don't go down the same path as Oswego. Thank you.
Okay, let me see if I can see any other hands up. Try Jay one more time.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can Jay.
All right. Uh, go to meetings new for me. I've got uh, a million hours on Zoom and apparently my preferences weren't set up correctly. Um, anyways, I'm a 22-year resident here in Batavia in the sixth ward. Um, Mike and Nick, uh, I've had conversations with them in the past and we agree on some things and we disagree on others. Um, I think they do a fair job representing us. Uh, one of the things that, that Nick said that I thought was interesting was if we don't build this project, we won't be defined by it. Uh, I do disagree with them that if we do build this project, we will be defined by it. Uh, I like what Tony, Alderman Tony Malley said. I think River Street will be the troll under the bridge if that building that size is built there. Um, I know people who have houses, small houses next to large houses and to not see the sunlight. Uh, it's pretty depressing and we've spent all that money in there. A couple of points I wanted to, to make, um, first is Laura, I think you pointed out that you haven't done the new modeling based on the COVID analysis for parking and other things. Um, but yet we're thinking about taking a, a massive undertaking and commitment from the community uh, in an uncertain time. Uh, I think we've got some of those in our resume here in Batavia. I think if you look at our investment in the coal power generation uh, fiasco, we entered in with Peabody. That was done and now we are paying for it years and years and years later. So the risk is really there. You look at the strip mall that sits on the river, some of the best riverfront property we have faces the back of a strip mall. And it was prudent probably to build at the time, but we didn't take a long-term outcome. You know, going back to this fear thing, there is some fear there. But don't be fearful that, that property is not gonna be developed. That property will be developed. What we offer today is not what was offered five years ago. That place is cleared now. You, we've entered into a partnership, we're willing to partner. Uh, I just don't think it's, it's prudent to do with the economic conditions that are here today to enter into a commitment that could impact our families, our tax base. I mean, what happens if that building does not get assessed at the value we think it's gonna be assessed at? Who picks up the difference in that tiff done? If we can't get the tax revenue out of that building because the apartment's rented for less, Shodin thinks that building's worth less, they protest what the tax value is gonna be. What happens under those circumstances? Who holds the bag for that? So not only do I think the project's too big for the scope, but I think the financial risk and what the risk to our community that it can do is too great to proceed. And with that, I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. I just, uh, I haven't really participated in that many of these, these meetings before, but uh, really felt strongly about this. So thank you.
Well, thanks for your comments, Jay. One of the things that I did want to share with you because you haven't been part of past discussions is that the redevelopment agreement does have safety provisions. I think it's important to share that with you so that you don't think that any shortfall is gonna end up on your tax bill. That um, there is a belt and suspenders contained in the RDA that if the increment is insufficient. Um, then there is an SSA that can be implemented um, that would put that on the tax bill of who owns that property at that time. And then there is also furthermore uh, backup that the developer can step in and pay that instead of us um, implementing the SSA as well. And the developer, in addition to that, is responsible for any of the payments that would need to be made to the school district for any school-aged children that might reside at the property. But I, so I just wanted to clarify that for you and provide you with that additional information. Okay, checking that we have no remaining hands up. We do not.
Laura, the, do you see any Matt Wosman on the list? He and his wife Carrie have been, had their hand up for a while. They said, and they said they got a green arrow on their end.
Matt Wosman. I don't have a hand up, but I can um, activate the microphone. There you go, Matt.
I have an email also.
Can you hear us, Matt?
Matt? Hello, Matt? The microphone is green indicating that it is uh, not muted on our side. There was another name that someone mentioned, a Carrie?
Yeah, his wife Carrie, they're both.
Oh, his wife Carrie, okay. Matt's name is here. I think he's working to try to um, resolve some microphone issues. See what this is. Okay? Are you there, Matt? Matt?
Uh, I just got a text. They can hear us, but their mic must not be allowing, not sure what to do.
Um.
Laura, is there a phone number they can call in? But I don't know if you can unmute them.
Register, you get the phone number to call in, but I don't, let me see if I have it. Howard is still on.
I think I've got it. It is uh, 562-247-8422. I'll repeat that, 562-247-8422. Let me see if I can post it down below with the audio pin.
Just in case there's anybody else that's having issues or can't get it.
So uh, Michael Bonin has his hand up. He might have something to share to help him since he had microphone issues before.
Yeah, I had the same microphone issue. There's a permission issue. So what I did is you can go under audio and call it, and click on phone audio instead of computer audio. It will give you the dial number and the access code and your audio code right there. So instead of copying it down, cause I think each meeting has its own individual, each meeting user has its own individual audio code. So if you just go into audio, unclick computer audio and click on phone audio, it will give you all the dialing and information.
Okay, thank you very much. That was Jay.
So I just put that all in the chat window, the uh, the uh, phone number and the audio code.
Okay.
It, it does come on the invitation as well.
Well, or waiting, the, the one last comment I wanted to make that I didn't make before was when the Donovan Bridge was reconstructed, there was a lot of fear in the downtown and it took years to recover from that. And I'm fearful that for some of those downtown business owners now to have that same type of construction impact. It's, I mean, how long ago was the, was the bridge completed? Four years ago, five years ago? And we're, we're seeing, we're seeing it being revitalized now. Um, and it's take, it's taken a long time. So just, just, just to think about.
Was that Jay or Michael who made that comment?
That was Jay.
Jay, thank you, Jay.
I don't have the article for that, but I think it was 2008.
Correct. 12 years ago.
Matt, can you hear us? Click to send their PIN. Looks like you need to enter a PIN number. And by clicking that, it says that I am sending it to you. Click to send their PIN.
They'd sent it to them.
And, okay. I think we have Matt Wosman.
Do you hear me?
Yes.
Pardon me?
Hi Carrie, yes, we can hear you.
Oh my goodness, okay. I am so sorry. I am so sorry you're involved all night. Thank you so much.
Patience with system.
Uh, I am so sorry. We are so sorry. Okay, so first of all, thank you all for all the time and tonight and along the way putting, that you put into this because we do appreciate it. Um, I know it's frustrating uh, to be on your end and I just, oh. I've lived here for almost my entire life, over 40 years. Um, I have chosen to raise my kids here and I just really am, care a lot about our community. So um, I've spoken before on this, I've written before on it. I am not connected to anybody or any group and the people that I speak with are also not connected and um, so I, I just want that clear from the beginning. My opposition comes from, you know, from my own personal opinion, my own personal observer, observations and my own personal research. Um, so I respect our differing opinions. I've written a lot, so I'm just gonna read. I respect our differing opinions and appreciate tonight's discussion. Um, I hope that all of you will be open, even though you're exhausted, and will listen to the residents. Um, I am a, gosh, I can't even think, I am a fourth ward, I think, um, resident, so this is in my district. Um, and so I, I think that everybody should listen to us, but I think you should listen to the people and um, you know, the silent is not necessarily because they, they support it. I've talked to a lot of silent people and I wrote in the survey um, three years ago. It took a lot of time to fit, to address your questions that were asked. And speaking from people who don't, who don't support it or don't support other things, but just don't speak because they feel it's a waste of time. They feel it's not heard. They don't, or we're just too busy, like all of us, we are too busy to, you know, put time into it. So the silent doesn't necessarily reflect people in support of this. I believe it does also support um, people who oppose it. So, um, so I'm just gonna list out here, thank you Joe for listening to and supporting Batavia residents. Thank you Abby for your key points and um, bringing up the new people and Joe also voicing concerns. Um, bringing up the 80's strip malls, I've made that comparison myself so many times over this is that the eyesore's we have, that if people would have just waited and taken more time and put more thought into the planning process, we wouldn't be, or just didn't get caught up in a trend, we wouldn't be where we are, is not opposed to growth. I support growth. I am excited about things in Batavia, again, living here almost my entire life. Um, it, it is something that I love to see, you know, when we were in high school, all we wanted was a movie theater. That's all we dreamed of. And so we've had a lot of growth, for people saying we haven't. For somebody who's lived here, we have had a lot of growth. Um, so pointing out um, that it's not just one group voicing their concerns. You, there are many people not connected that are voicing their concerns and opposing this. Um, Abby saying that this, there, there are safer investments, um, maybe not going so. Abby saying that this, there are safer investments, maybe not going so big. I literally said that to my husband tonight was maybe we, I had heard that maybe where the gas station was across the street, there was going to be apartments, something like that. And you test that and you see if, if it brings people. And then if it does, then you can go bigger. Riverfront property that Abby brought up, a better investment in general, like let's, I mean, it's just a better investment. Thank you, Tony, for echoing Joe and Abby and recognizing the people who have emailed you and also for addressing the lack of aesthetics of this building compared to stately buildings in other communities. That was one major point that I've made from the very beginning is the aesthetics of the limestone we are of Batavia. And I mean, I am not supportive of the scale. I've never been. So the height definitely bothers me. I would like it taken down and my children have listened to me everywhere we go. I'm like, see that, that, that's what we're going to have. And I pointed out and, you know, take it down a couple stories. And, but the stateliness of it is, has been a huge, huge, huge problem. Like yes, fiber boards meant less, but it does not have the beauty that our architecture in Batavia of the buildings, like the mashup show. That is beautiful. That's what we need to save our money budget for, so that we can build things that incorporate that. And Tony, thank you for bringing up how the sun will no longer shine on the farmer's market and on River Street. That was such an investment. I, I think that's, it's not a financial maybe, it could affect it financially, but it's just people love, people from other communities, they come to the farmer's market, they use our path to go through. And that would be, that would be a disservice, I think. Thank you, Marty, for reiterating the need to listen to all people, different generations. That's another thing. Being a teacher, I believe in that. I believe that that's what our world needs is that while we always say the older generation has wisdom, I also believe that the younger generation does in diff, it's just different ways. And we can all learn from each other and I think we need to work together on where our future, what, what is good for our future. Marty, I applaud your acknowledgement of the changes happened over the last nine months because obviously it has been huge. Delaying gratification, planning and budgeting and looking to find, looking forward to what's to come. That's exciting. That is exciting. Yes, maybe this was what we were doing. We were look, you know, you were looking at it as this was exciting. But not everything we want, we get, or not everything that we thought was going to be good, is great. So that's something to consider in this. It's just change. I applaud the boardwalk shops. I love supporting local. I love, that has been something that we have done every weekend. We walk to the, we would walk to the boardwalk shops. Our people have changed, our values have shifted. That's not fear, that's change. We don't fear this project. We don't support it for valid reasons. Presenting theories to people who have lived through construction, know, they know their reality. Their opposition is logical, not fear based. Like Keenan, I am confident we will have other developers, other developments to say, to say otherwise is fear. The time that has passed has been, has brought good. The discussions have happened. Problems arise and we've been challenged and they've been addressed. Citizens have used their voices, new people, like many of you addressed, many of you mentioned. Each failure brings us one step closer to success. This being a no is not the end. It can be the beginning of a better. And to quote, when one door closes, another one opens, but we often look so long and so regretfully upon the closed door that we do not see the one which has opened for us. I think COVID has brought change and we will see the open doors in time, but we have to be patient. We have to open our minds to move forward in different ways. So that's all I have. Thank you again. And I am super sorry that I kept you guys even longer. But I hope you hear about the open mindedness and the voices of many residents, whether they're speaking or not.
Thank you.
I do not have any other emails or messages to me.
I don't have any other hands up from, up, I'm sorry, one more. Aaron Kilburg. Aaron, you're up.
My apologies for prolonging your evening. I've been with you the whole time, so I, at this point decided to have to chime in, but I do appreciate the difficulty of the decision for all of you. I've been a resident in Batavia since 2003. I'm in the sixth ward. I've actually been working closely with Nick and Abby on the We Side with Batavia Restaurants program. And so I have just two observations is that the one thing I love about Batavia is I, I think we're a community of people that when we get behind an idea, will roll up their sleeves and get involved to make a difference. That's why we started the We Side with Batavia program. And when you have an idea that makes sense to our community, people will get behind it. And they will get enthusiastic about it and they'll get their hands dirty to make a positive difference. And one thing that has, I've benefited from this program with Nick and Abby is I have been in deep conversation with a lot of these restaurant owners. And I feel their pain and I feel their fear and we're trying to come together as a community to preserve their business there, here on the other side. But when we talk about fear and I hate to hang up on you, Nick, on this, but here's how I see it. You know, if this goes through, I hope it's a huge success. But in my opinion, the reality is if we do this, all the business, businesses contiguous to that job site, and I'm in the construction industry and I go on job sites, at least before COVID, on a weekly basis, those businesses will either go out of business or be damaged irreparably. And that's just a fact. And there'll be collateral damage to the building of this project. And again, I hope, but I don't think I am. And so their pain is real and they should be scared. And so I really agree with what Martin has said, what Abby has is initially when this project came out, I was for it. But as things have evolved and as things have changed over the years and where we sit today, it's a different world. And I've said on a lot of meetings about what construction and commercial construction or residential construction is going to look like moving forward and it's going to be a different world. And, you know, I think the success of the incubator program with the shop, the boardwalk shops, just in the course of this call, that has really got to be exciting because that seems like a better fit for Batavia. Where we, we're a cautious community. We move slowly, but we move with purpose. And I think the success of that, if we were to do something smaller, that would be, you know, an easy transition for those shops to move into, I think that would have a far greater success and be less disruptive for current businesses that are fighting for their lives. And I think that's something that you would get tremendous support from in the community. You know, I've heard a lot of talk here about the silent majority of the people that speak up are the same few people. But, and Nick tells me, I'm not scared. When I see a problem, I attack it. But when people that are good, people that care about this community, that care about their neighbors, and I'm getting emotional speaking about this, when they're telling you no, they're not doing it because they're scared. They're doing it because it's, they feel like it's not right. And so I think there's been a lot of good discussion tonight and I do appreciate all the perspectives, but there's a lot of good people that have spoken up at this time for a reason and it's because they care about this community. And so I would just hope you would take those voices into strong consideration. And again, I do thank you all for your service. So thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
I guess with nothing else, back to Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you. I've stayed here for four and a half hours, haven't opened my mouth, as probably you may have noticed. I would like to make a couple of observations though, before I call for item 12 to be voted on. Number one, I want to say how proud I am of each and every one of you regardless of how you vote on this whole thing, because I think this has been a very realistic discussion of democracy in action. I mean, we've had probably the, the cleanest disagreements and the strongest amount of argument that we've probably ever had in the history of the Batavia City Council. And at the end of the day, we're all sitting here still friends and still smiling and we'll get on to the next thing, next meeting or whatever. But I, I think at this end of the day, we really have shown everybody what government should be like. And I, I say that as a pretext to what my next statement is going to be. One of the things I am very seriously concerned about is the mayor of this town is because I do have some other roles in the region that I play. So I do get my ears bent with some degree of reliability about things that are going to happen in the Chicago area. State of Illinois and maybe even in the United States of America. And I will tell you, there's some pretty strong voices out there right now who are predicting, just give it a few more weeks or a couple more months and you're going to see some crashing and burning in the state of Illinois when it comes to government spending, the likes of which you may never have seen before. And the idea that we're going to continue to do all the spending that we have been doing without finding some money someplace, because, you know, we went to the federal level and we found all these trillions of dollars that we've now put out to the world and, and I don't argue about that. It probably needed to be done. But at the end of the day, there's one heck of a debt waiting someplace for all that to be paid back to. And so the day of, of us thinking that we're going to be able to kind of keep things business as usual and go on the way it is, I'm afraid are going to be over. And if you don't believe me, just give it about six or eight weeks and you're going to be able to see all kinds of stuff at the state and federal level. It's not going to be good news. And so the one thing I thought Batavia had a little bit of advantage is if we did this project, we would be generating potentially some fairly significant tax base. Now, there's arguments about that, arguments against it and arguments for it. But at the end of the day, whether we like it or not, or what we think we should, or what we think we are, should do or not do, Batavia is going to need some shot in the eye like everybody else, but we're, our, our finances, thanks to your careful management and Laura's dynamic overseeing of our city, we're financially right now in some pretty good shape. And I just hope we can stay there. The fact that we've got a 73 cent city tax rate in this town comparison, and I'm not going to quote what the neighbors are, but we're really looking good if you compare us to all the neighboring communities. Fact that we can do that, I think speaks well to your management and your votes, but I'm fearful that we're going to be really ruffled up here trying to continue to do that. Not anything you folks have done, but everything that the world around us is going to do when it comes time to start talking about how much money you're going to get from the local state distribution fund of the state of Illinois and maybe some of the new taxes that are going to come from the federal level. It's going to be a real rough road here. So government in the days ahead is not going to be a fun place to be. And I thank all of you who have served and those of you who are running for reelection, because this is not a pretty picture here right now. And it's a difficult moment. But I think at the end of the day, regards of how this all comes out, we should all hold our heads pretty high and have a sense of pride about ourselves that we really have acted in a very concise and professional and democratic fashion that we are trying to do within our own hearts and minds is in the best interest of the people of Batavia. So with that being said, item number 12 is a, excuse me, item 13 is ordinance 2101, an ordinance dissolving the tax increment financing district number five of the Washington Wilson redevelopment district. Talk, take it back to Alderman Callahan.
No, I will not be making that motion.
So moved. McFadden.
Moved by Alderman McFadden.
Second by Baron.
Second by Alderman Baron. Any discussion? Court called the roll.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Rizzato? Rizzato?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Knopf?
No.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Aaron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler? Meitzler? Do we still have Meitzler?
Shows that he's still on, but he's not responding.
Do you have the city attorney on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Give me some direction on what we do if we have somebody that's not voting.
Well, in the past, we've had issues, if you can put a message in the chat, as long as we're comfortable that he, that voting, we accepted that. I guess what we can also continue on the roll call vote. And then always come back to him.
All right. The court would continue?
Malley?
No.
Yor?
No.
Jerome?
Aye.
Seven to six, right?
Yeah.
Seven, yes, seven, yes, six, no, one absent.
Correct.
Can anyone get ahold of him? It doesn't seem fair.
Laura, you're on mute. We can't hear you.
Wait a minute, is that Alderman Malley telling me that I was on mute?
Nice of you to know this, Tony. Because it's 12:18 in the morning.
For that.
I'll try giving him a call.
I texted him and didn't get a response. He might be asleep at his desk.
Somebody text Aaron and wake him up.
Your honor, Stan?
Yeah.
Just going on historical, I'm not really sure where exactly we're headed to this evening. I believe Elliot had previously expressed that he would be a no vote that would tie this to seven to seven, which would mean that the mayor would need to vote.
I think that Elliot is.
Excellent. You're better.
Meitzler, you're a no?
I know.
So that's seven, seven.
The mayor's a yes.
So that's eight, seven.
All right, we go then to item number 14, which is ordinance 21 dash zero two, an ordinance amending the ordinance 89 dash 90, eliminating property from the riverfront redevelopment area tax increment district number one. Alderman Callahan, you want to take this or you want to pass this one?
I believe it was all discussed at the same time. This section is the removing of certain properties out of TIF one.
Right. For the project to go forward though, we have to pass, take actions on all these issues for, get to some final decision here.
Yes, as was stated in the, the first part, the zero one is the dissolution of five, zero two is the removal of properties out of TIF one and zero three is the removal of properties out of TIF three. I think they, these were all kind of discussed together. I don't believe there's anything else additional.
I think we still have to take action on them though, I think. Yeah, ordinance. Someone, somebody want to make a motion so we can?
So moved.
Second Baron.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Baron for the approval of ordinance 21 oh two, which is the ordinance amending ordinance 89 dash 90, eliminating property from the riverfront redevelopment area of tax increment district, financing district number one. Any discussion? Court called the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Yur?
No.
Theron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
I think I heard no.
Yes, no.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Knopf?
No.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
That's seven, seven?
Mayor is yes.
Eight, seven.
Okay, moving to item 14, ordinance 21 dash 02, an ordinance amending ordinance 89 dash, am I getting this right? No, am I sure? Were we on 14 or 15? I'm losing track here.
We're on 15, I believe.
I'm sorry. Okay, moving to 15, which is ordinance 2103, an ordinance amending ordinance 04 dash 09, eliminating property from downtown redevelopment tax increment financing district number three. Alderman Callahan?
You can entertain motion. I will not make a motion.
All right. Entertain a motion for the approval of ordinance 2103.
So moved, Baron.
So moved by Baron, second by who?
Wolf.
Wolf? Change of discussion? Court call the roll then on ordinance 2103.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley? Malley?
No.
Yur?
No.
Theron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Knopf?
No.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Seven, seven?
Seven, seven. The mayor is aye.
Eight, seven.
Eight, seven. Okay, moving to item 16, which is ordinance 2104, an ordinance approving the Near East Downtown Tax Increment Financing District Redevelopment Plan and Program. Somebody care to make that a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Baron. Any discussion? Court call the roll on ordinance 2104.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Yur?
No.
Theron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Knopf?
No.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Seven, seven?
Okay, ordinance 2104, seven, seven. The mayor is aye. Okay, moving to 17, ordinance 2105, an ordinance designating the Near East Downtown District Redevelopment Project Area of the city of Batavia as a redevelopment project area pursuant to the Tax Increment Allocation Act as amended. Somebody take care to make a motion for the approval?
So moved.
Second, Baron.
Moved by Alderman O'Brien, second by Alderman Baron. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Yur?
No.
Theron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Knopf?
No.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
All right. Ordinance 21 dash 03 is seven, seven. The mayor is aye. So that's approved. Moving to 18, which is ordinance 2106, an ordinance adopting tax increment financing for the Near East Downtown Redevelopment Project Area.
So moved, Baron.
Moved by Baron?
Second.
Second by McFadden. Any discussion? Court call the roll.
Baron?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Callahan?
No.
Meitzler?
No.
Malley?
No.
Yur?
No.
Theron?
Aye.
McFadden?
Aye.
Miller?
No.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Knopf?
No.
Chanset?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Seven, seven.
Okay, ordinance 2106 is seven, seven. The mayor is aye. Motion's approved. Okay, moving into 19, the administrators report.
I just have a few items to share with you this evening. Earlier today, I learned that on December 28th, we received notice that the Federal Highway Authority has approved Phase Two of Prairie Street. And so we expect construction to begin on that project in spring of 2023. Later this month, staff will be having a kickoff meeting with the Batavia Park District and Hitchcock Design to begin the project of the master river plan. And then the last thing that I would like to point out is that King County Health Department has done a nice job of putting information about vaccines. If you go to their website, there is a tool that you can sign up for, to receive informational emails as that becomes available about when vaccines will be widely distributed and who can get them and where. And so we are going to post information about that on our website, on social media, and make sure that it's included in our email blast out to everybody because we know that people are, have a lot of questions about how all of that is going to roll out. And that's all I have unless anybody has any questions for me.
All right, moving to committee reports. I was just asked, does any of the chairman have anything to submit tonight?
I only have tomorrow. Only tomorrow on the cow is just the continuation for the landmark designation for the property on Washington. That's it.
It'd be a shorter meeting tomorrow night.
And we promised the owner that we would have that meeting so we cannot cancel it.
Yeah, that's fine.
We will, we will have that meeting. In one day, we will finish that meeting. We won't lap over into another day.
We'll finish it today.
Yes. Later tonight, we'll finish that meeting.
Do we have any other business? I just have a couple of comments to make very quickly. Number one, I don't have all the details yet, but I am told, and I've seen a picture of it, the Batavia, downtown Batavia was a feature of the Rose Bowl Parade on Rose Bowl. They showed a picture of it as part of the presentation of great things that are happening in America. And so I'm going to have more about that in a couple of days. I've got a copy of it. I'll send it out to all of you so you can see what it looked like. And the other thing I just want to offer up is you made some history tonight because I will tell you that in my many years as mayor of this town, I've never voted probably this many times. This has made more time than I voted in the whole rest of my whole career as mayor of this town. So you probably set a record here tonight that may last for another hundred years, I would think. Who cares to make the motion to adjourn?
I'm so for your turn.
Motion is second. Court take a voice vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting's adjourned.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning. See y'all later today.
Yeah. See you tonight.